Okay, good evening. I'm Brian Sullivan, the Chair of the Howard's Board of Appeals. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the Howard's Board of Appeals on this date, January 29th. Purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide of applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and the Massachusetts zoning enabling act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting, which we are. Any person attending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, the Secretary, and attorneys presenting a case to inform the Chair if her protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or to ask questions regarding the case are requested to fill out an information form on the podium. Rachel is the one that didn't check. Okay. Also, there are agendas on the corner table for those who didn't pick one up. Okay. And I'd like to have each member of the Board identify themselves, starting with Ken.
Kenneth Dixon.
John August.
Brian Sullivan.
Alexander Donahue.
Chris Murphy.
Okay. And now, as the Secretary, would you, I mean Clerk, would you call the first case?
Case number 2025-01, Daniel and Jessica Turk, through their attorney, James M. Norcross. The owner of the property located at 1684 Orleans Road. Assessors map 113 parcel W.1-2 and 240 Pleasant Bay Road. Assessors map 113 parcel W.1 in the RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a variance for 2325 attachment to table area, excuse me, table 2 area regulation to create new panhandle lot pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw. 325-52 in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10.
The, I'm going to read relevant notices and what has it received regarding this case. The planning department submitted comments indicating the applicant would need to file an A and R, you know, approval not required plan, to the planning department, given the circumstances where the proposed lot does not meet the minimum lot area requirement. I'm sure you're probably aware of that.
Yes, we are.
Okay. The health department indicated that they have no concerns with the proposed project. Butters, now I'll read the letter. Butters, Thomas, and Jacqueline Leach of 224 Pleasant Bay Road in Howard submitted a letter. And I'll read that. "Good Mr. Sullivan, we may be unable to attend the Board of Appeals' public hearing on January 29th, 2025, case number 2025-01, Daniel and Jessica Turk appeal. Therefore, we are sending this letter to make public our interest in the case. We are directed to Butters to the Turk property on the west side, which will be shared, which we share roughly 130 feet along their property line. We look directly into the property from our backyard. The Turk family plans to develop the property as a private residence, and it can only enhance our neighborhood. It is great to have neighbors with young children who can afford to live in Howard. This panhandle lot received a variance to construct a metal building for commercial purposes decades ago against the complaints of the neighbors and has ironically become an eyesore." We couldn't find a record of that variance, correct? Okay. But that's, that's a long time ago.
Right.
"We want the Board to know we both overwhelmingly support this endeavor of the Turk family, and we hope the Board will approve this single-family home." Of course, tonight, we're approving a lot, which I'm assuming we can form a lot that you can then get put a single-family home on. Okay. All right. The, there were no other comments from other town departments, or Butters were received. So Chairman, as Chairman, I'd like to ask the applicant representative to introduce yourselves and any person assisting you.
Of course. Good evening. My name is Jamie Norcross, representing Casey and Jessica Turk. Next to me is Casey Turk, and behind us is Jessica. I had a handout, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I just.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
And we did receive the revised plan.
Yes.
Sure.
The only change on the plan was the butter callouts on the north were reversed.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know you have a lengthy agenda, but before going into the variance criteria, I think it'd be helpful just to give a little bit of overview and background of the properties, because it's a little bit of a unique situation going on with their properties. So Mr. and Mrs. Turk own the properties at 240 Pleasant Bay Road and 1684 Orleans Road. 240 Pleasant Bay Road contains almost 46,000 square feet of area and is improved with an existing house, guest house, and a detached garage. 1684 Orleans Road contains 23 and 1/2 square feet of area and is improved with an existing commercial warehouse building. So in conjunction with this application, the Turks would divide a 5,000-square-foot section of property from 240 Pleasant Bay Road to combine with 1684 Orleans Road. This creates a panhandle lot in compliance with the zoning bylaw and provides 1684 Orleans Road with 35 feet of frontage on Orleans Road, where no frontage currently exists. It also increases the overall size of the proposed lot to just shy of 30,000 square feet. We would still be shy of the 40,000 square feet required for the zoning district, and so that is why we are before you for the variance application this evening. If you turn to, just try to orient you a little bit, if you turn to the third page of my handout, excuse me, fourth page, it's labeled Exhibit A, and this is a 1968 approval-not-required plan. And so 240 Pleasant Bay Road is the lot that's outlined in pink on that plan. And 1680, excuse me, 240 Pleasant Bay Road and 1684 Orleans Road is actually combined from two separate lots, and those are highlighted in orange on that plan. The properties that are shown on that plan were owned for many, many years by the Walker family, who are a longtime Howard's family and operated a fuel oil company for many years. Specifically, Alton and Jane Walker purchased 240 Pleasant Bay Road in 1940, and they bought the two lots that now make up 1684 Orleans Road in 1960s. They remained in common ownership with the Walkers until 2001. The assessor's records reference that on 240 Pleasant Bay Road that the existing guest house was formerly the office for the oil company. And the assessor's records also state that the commercial warehouse building was built in 1985, so it was also built during the Walker's ownership. As the Chair mentioned, we also weren't able to find any records relative to the building of that structure, other than what's shown on the assessor's field card, other than the anecdotal notation from Mr. and Mrs. Leach relative to their opposition to that building construction back in the 80s and a reference to some sort of town approval that occurred at that time. In 2001, the Walkers sold both lots to the same buyer, although it should note that the lots were sold by two separate deeds. And again, they remained in common ownership until 2007, when 240 Pleasant Bay Road was sold. At that time, the owner retained an easement across 240 Pleasant Bay Road for access to 1684 Orleans Road, and the commercial warehouse use continued during that time. My clients bought 240 Pleasant Bay Road in 2018, and then about a year and a half ago, they became aware that the owner of 1684 Orleans Road was going to be putting the property on the market, and they decided to acquire the property for a couple of reasons. First, to have some level of control over whatever commercial use is going to be done on that property. The concern being that somebody was going to come in and intensify the commercial use for the commercial warehouse storage space, which would have a detrimental impact potentially on the use of their existing property, 240 Pleasant Bay Road. The second goal was with the thought of building a house on that property, and they would then move, the Turks and their children, their residents would move to that house to be built on 1684 Orleans Road. That lot has further setback from the road, some additional privacy. The corner of Pleasant Bay Road and Orleans Road where the house is is a very dangerous intersection, as I'm sure you've seen in the newspaper, been a bunch of accidents there over the years. And so kind of getting away from that area, this was an opportunity they saw potentially to do that, in terms of having a house in this rear lot. So with that as some background, moving along to the criteria for a variance. And so it's a three-pronged test, and in order for an applicant to receive approval for a variance, it's necessary for us to meet all three prongs. We can't just meet one or two, we have to meet all three. And so the criteria for your review tonight is, number one, owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Number two, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial, or otherwise to the applicant. And three, that desirable relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or nullifying or derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. So for number one, unique conditions affecting the land or building, we'd suggest there are unique conditions that impact both the lot itself and the building located on this lot. The lot is taxed as a separate parcel with a structure on it by the town of Howard, but it's a lot that does not have any frontage and is essentially landlocked. In my experience, that's pretty unique. I've encountered situations where you have a vacant parcel that's landlocked, particularly you get these old woodland parcels that may not have the access, but I have not encountered a situation where you have effectively a landlocked parcel with a structure on it that was built 40 years ago. In relation to the structure itself, you have a commercial warehouse building that's been in existence for over 40 years, which is located right in the middle of a residential zoning district. And if you've been out to the site, you can see it's literally surrounded by single-family homes. We think that's pretty unique. Number two, literal enforcement of the bylaw would create a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. I would suggest the Turks will suffer hardship without the approval of a variance. The inability to construct a residential structure on the property greatly limits their use of this property, which in fact is the most appropriate use, given the location in a residential zoning district. The denial of a variance will require the Turks to likely continue the commercial use, which may negatively impact themselves and the neighborhood as a whole. Number three is the variance will not substantially harm the public good or derogate from the purpose of the bylaw. I'd suggest that various, a variance, excuse me, in this instance will not harm the public good or derogate from the purpose of the bylaw. The intent of requiring a minimum amount of square footage for a lot to be buildable is intended to limit density and promote adequate setbacks and privacy among neighboring property owners. In this instance, with the proposed division off of 240 Pleasant Bay Road, 1684 Orleans Road will be almost 30,000 square feet, which is similar, if not larger, than many neighboring properties, and will not result in excessive density or crowding of this area. And if you're wondering how we know how our lot size compares, if you go to the two last pages of the handout, the very last page, these are all the lots that we looked at on the assessor's records to determine their lot size according to those records. And essentially, these are neighboring properties, as well as properties that were notified as part of the butter process. We deem this to really be the neighborhood for comparison's sake. The prior page shows the lot size for all those properties. And we've calculated both the average size, of which we are larger than the average size. And I would mention, I think the average is a little bit skewed, because there are three lots that are in excess of an acre and a half, but still were larger than the average. And if you look at the median size of 19,000 or so square feet, we're significantly larger than the median size. So if you're looking at a 40,000-square-foot lot as what the bylaw requires, we understand that. However, if you're looking at the neighborhood in terms of what's comparable and compatible with the neighborhood, this lot size is certainly both. It's comparable with the others, and it's compatible in terms of overall size. So lastly, I'd suggest that, again, it's a very unique situation. There's some mystery involved with the building, I guess, that so far we've been able to solve. But really, the use of it as a residential structure is significantly more in line with the neighborhood than what's there now, and significantly more in line with the zoning bylaw. It'd be a residential use in a residential neighborhood, as opposed to what is currently a commercial use in a residential neighborhood. And if you've been out to the site, you've seen, again, surrounded by single-family homes. It's a complete outlier in this neighborhood. Lastly, I did want to mention, one of my clients of Butters, Mr. and Mrs. Bernstein, who are located to the north, indicated that if my client would agree to a couple of conditions, they would not oppose the project. Those conditions being that they would not construct any new ADU building on either 1684 Orleans Road or 240 Pleasant Bay Road. And my clients are happy to agree to those conditions. If we're, get to the point where we're fortunate enough for the Board to grant an approval, then that could certainly be included as part of any decision. So that would.
You said that if we approve.
Yeah.
There'd be no construction on that property?
No, no, no construction of an ADU in addition to the home.
ADU.
So they didn't want a separate structure on there. They thought that, I believe, and Casey could have the conversation directly, but it may, I believe it was related, they thought there'd be too much density if there was another building on there, in addition to the, in addition to a single-family home.
In addition to the building that might be built on.
Exactly, yeah. Two structures, they thought was too much.
Right, okay.
So that would be our presentation this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up questions to the rest of the Board, so the, you mentioned as far as the parcel being landlocked. But at some point, when, whenever this was given a variance, or a use variance, more likely for the construction of the building, I'm assuming, and I think you mentioned, there was a right-of-way that was at that point given to go across the back of 240 Pleasant to 1684 Orleans Road.
Well, let me just clarify. So when the structure was built, both lots, three lots in total, but the two properties, 1684 and 240 Pleasant Bay, were both owned by the Walkers.
Okay.
So when the structure was built, there was no need for separate access, because it had, it was common ownership. And now, I'm not sure how they were able to, I guess, build the structure necessarily, because we don't have any, we're unable to locate any approvals for that. The access was created when the ownership was separated in 2007, when 240 Pleasant Bay Road was conveyed. The then owners, who remained owning 1684 Orleans Road, retained an easement across. But as it relates to itself, it's a lot, again, if they were owned separately, you have a lot that's, I would say, effectively landlocked in terms of no frontage. So from a buildability standpoint, it has no frontage.
Yes, but it has, at one point, had an easement.
It did have an easement at one point.
It did have an easement.
Yep.
So there is access.
Yes.
And for functioning still as a commercial building, which I know is not the goal here.
Correct, yeah.
It still has, has, is it a recorded easement? Is it a, is just sort of?
Yes, it was, it was, it was written, it was written in the deed.
Okay.
I have a copy, if you'd like.
Right, so there's an easement still existing for that commercial building?
No, not to get too technical, but because the Turks own both properties, easement's effectively expunged. If they were to convey 1684 separately, they.
All right, so now the easement is, is.
It's not needed at this point.
Okay.
From a legal standpoint, it's considered merged.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay. So, um, my own personal opinion is that, and I, looking at the neighborhood, looking at the lots and the analysis which you provided regarding square footage, I am one who's certainly like to see the town increase density in several neighborhoods or zones, you know, given the fact that, I feel the fact that the 40,000-square-foot requirement in the town is not, not right for today's, for today, particularly on creating more, not only affordable housing, but increasing, increasing density in the town, which I think is needed. The issue I have here is that, in creating a new lot through a variance, when I don't follow or agree with the fact of the hardship that you've, you've shown here, that's my own personal feeling here at the moment. You know, and solving problems on density, which the town is looking into, by doing it with a variance, when your client, the Turks, bought the property knowing the situation, so I'm having a hard time looking as far as, you know, self-created hardship here, knowing what the situation is in expanding a lot. And certainly, you mentioned ADR, which is certainly an opportunity that can be addressed on this property, to build a, you know, an ADR, and could be done on that site or anyplace else on, on the property. Okay. As a matter of fact, it could be probably because it's three separate lots right now, you know, you know, handle the easily of ADR on 240 and, and one on 1684. That's just, just my, just a thought there. But I don't see a moment, I don't see a pathway for granting a new lot with relief by a variance. That's my personal feeling. And there, I am sure, there are other lots in town where people have an additional, there are a lot of great neighborhoods in our community. There are 10,000-square-foot lots, even less, 15,000, 20,000. I mean, in my neighborhood, my lots are lower than 20,000 feet, and the whole neighborhood is around 20,000 feet lots. And I think it's, it's a great size, and even down to 15,000, a great size. And even 10. So what is preventing someone else who's got, and as a matter of fact, in my lot, I've got 20,000 feet, and I've got 10,000 feet off to our side, creating another lot, you know, and going for a variance? So I'm, I'm trying to see where the hardship here is, and I have concerns on creating a lot based upon doing it with a variance when I'm not seeing a pathway as far as on hardship.
Just, could I just address a couple?
Yeah, just.
In terms of the hardship, I think part of the problem is, you're right, you could, I assume, construct some, some form of an ADU on the.
ADU, and I said ADU.
1684. But the problem is, without it being a separate lot with frontage, it'd be challenging to sell. And so if they're, the goal, again, for them is to move there, you know, not a far move, but a move, in terms of relocating to that property, and then they would want to sell 240 Pleasant Bay Road. But if you don't have, you know, separate lots, you can't sell.
Correct.
So then they're kind of.
I understand.
So the hardship is you're really stuck. You can't then build it, because you don't, financially, you can't own both properties. In terms of the precedent, I mean, each decision is separate on its own, it doesn't create a precedent. I understand the concern that folks might see, might take an opportunity to try a similar tact. I mean, I think this is a little bit different in terms of, again, we have this commercial warehouse that's sitting back on this property that create, again, it's not a vacant land, it's got an improved, an improved property with a structure on it already. And again, I think allowing the variance would permit a structure there, a residential structure, that's far more in keeping with the neighborhood than, than what's there now. I don't think there's any question about that.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
Looking at this, I'm going to vary from the Chair's position just a little bit, in that I am moved by the fact that we have a landlocked parcel, that it's somewhere along the line, somebody granted permission for a commercial structure to be built upon it. I think it needs the qualifications for a variance, and I do believe in the hardship that you've described. And I think as drafted here, I could probably support it. Those are my comments.
Okay. John?
I would be inclined to agree with Ken, with the caveat of, I'm having trouble getting my mind around, I do agree, I think it's, it's hard to justify a hardship when you bought it in 2023 after owning the adjacent property for a long time and knowing what was there, right? So I think the financial hardship, but I lean more towards, you know, the good of the neighborhood, and, you know, I think it's not good for the public good to have, you know, a commercial building sitting right in the middle of, you know, an ostensibly residential neighborhood. So I can get my head around that. Where, where I'm struggling, and I don't entirely know the answer to, is, were we to grant the variance? Seems to me like we're, we're creating a new slate, right, for this property, right? So when the design comes in for the house, it's going to have to comply with all the, you know, setoffs that are required, because you're not going to be able to argue that it's a pre-existing condition.
Right, it'd have to comply with all setbacks.
Yeah, so I think you're, you're not talking a huge house that's going to be able to be built here, you know, to be able to comply with everything.
Yep.
You know, given the fact that, that just, I think it's north, depending on how you look at the math, there's, there's a lot that appears to be quasi-panhandle lot. I don't have a big issue with the panhandle lot, you know, it's more, like I said, I, you know, I'm looking at this as a single decision to approve the lot. There's a future decision to approve the house that's going to be built on this lot.
Right, and I think part of that was really a financial consideration, because if you're going to do architectural plans, like, you really got to kind of get to this part first before you design something, so, yeah.
There's a lot of expense to go into designing.
Yeah, I understand.
So we kind of want to.
One step at a time.
Yep.
Totally agree. Chris?
Yeah, what John said, pretty much what I was going to bring up, there's an ugly commercial structure there in the middle of a residential neighborhood, even though the hardship, financial hardship, was self-created. Well, it existed when you bought the property, it's no, there was no mystery there. It's certainly nice to get a commercial structure down and a house up for the benefit of the neighborhood, so that benefit is a huge benefit. Funny, my second question was exactly what you asked, too. Can you actually build a house without coming back for another variance for setbacks? And it sounds like you've looked into that.
Yeah.
We might want, if you approve this, put that as a condition, that no further variances can be granted on this property, not just double-dipping on this thing again.
Sure, yep.
But other than that, I can understand wanting to get rid of a, before it falls down, get rid of, put something else up.
I don't think we could condition no further, no further variances, just have to be presented to the case. It's, no thoughts on that, I don't believe we could.
Certainly, you put it in the notes.
Right, I understand.
And to have been assured that they don't need a variance.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I have nothing more to add to this. I think the rest of the Board has pretty well covered it. I'm in agreement with, not so much with my Chairman, but the other three members.
I do have one other question that actually does not relate to the decision here, but have you had the soil tested?
In regards to?
They ran a petroleum business on it?
Correct, well.
For a long time? Before you build?
We have. Again, that's one of those expenses that would be addressed after, you know, the decision of the Board here.
I think it would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Certainly, that'd be planting vegetables on the, where the tanks used to be.
So just back on the, the comment I made, obviously, you'll need a variance from the 40,000 square feet in the zoning district, if you were to build anything. But we're creating that, that variance in essence by approving this lot, I guess. But all the other setbacks would not.
Yeah, once we, if we, if the variance gets approved for the lot.
It's a buildable lot.
It's a, it's a buildable lot, and at that, to the point, they just need to be able to put. Flip front of the house on it.
Yep, okay.
Chair, further questions?
No further questions, okay. All right, what is this, what is the currently size of that commercial structure?
1,400 square feet. And.
I'm sorry.
It's much bigger than that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And you are, I'm sorry.
Yes, it was owned by 240 Pleasant Bay Road.
Okay.
Which was also owned by the Walkers.
Forty-eight by thirty.
Excuse me. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak? Okay, please, and why don't you go to the podium and identify yourselves and.
My name is Catherine Carhart. My husband and I own 228 Pleasant Bay Road, which is directly behind the quote-unquote "eyesore" of a metal building.
Sure.
I have been looking at that building for 19 years. And actually, our property was part of the Cash and Walker property. And actually, our property was part of the Cash and Walker property at one point as well. I have a problem where I understand that Mr. Turk is saying he has a hardship, but he bought the property knowing the size of the property, the fact that it was designated commercial, and what restrictions were on that. But in the process, he also went through, he clear cut the property, and this went on for some time. And this is going to sound strange saying, but we unfortunately have lost a lot of wildlife because of it. That building in no way has disturbed us or my neighbor. It is not an eyesore. It was used and actively used for a commercial property. It was landscaping equipment was stored in there for a business. Occasionally, we heard them, but it was, you know, it wasn't an eyesore of any type or form. But I guess the problem that we have is that this was gone into knowingly. And now he's asking to change things. And, you know, we really have a problem with that. I mean, it's not the fact that we don't want a house built in our backyard, nobody wants that. But the requirement is for 40,000 square feet. And even with this variance, it's going to bring it just shy of 30,000 square feet. And again, we live in a residential neighborhood, but we're not offended by that commercial property at all. And one of the caveats as far as what's in his paperwork is that it will remain commercial. And we have no problem with that whatsoever. I don't know if this is the appropriate forum for it, but I have a concern where that was Walker oil tanks were stored there. There were also kerosene tanks stored there. What is going to happen when digging starts on the property for a foundation for a house? Is contamination going to be coming up from the ground that is not only going to affect his property, but it's going to affect our property as well? Again, it's, I don't know if this is the proper forum for that, but that is a big concern that we have. But again, one of the problems we have is the property was clear cut as well prior to any asking for a variance whatsoever. Again, that's his prerogative, but again, we have no problem with it remaining as a commercial property, and we are totally against the variance.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to us? Okay, thank you.
Nancy Ledoux, 234 Pleasant Bay Road. I have, I just have a question. I have a deed at egress for the driveway.
Okay, wait a minute, so you're you're adjacent to 240?
Yeah.
And you have a egress that's
I have, there's, there's a back driveway on my property. And I have egress down his driveway onto my property.
All right, I'm a little confused. Can you explain to me this egress?
I'm not aware, well, I haven't run the title of Ms. Ledoux's property, so I'm not sure about an easement. But are you saying that it runs from the back of your property out on 1684?
All the way out to Route 39.
Okay, yeah, we don't know anything about the easement.
I have no information on any of my deeds that would indicate that. Do you have a copy of your deed available?
No.
Okay. Can you, um, could you come over here a second and show me on a map what you're talking about? And then again, obviously, it's a situation that we need to get clarified.
All right, so
You can, you want to come up and take a look at this same time?
I think I, sure.
I'm a little confused what you're talking about.
All right, so I have a fence
Actually, don't, don't write on this one.
I have a fence that runs along here.
Okay.
There's a
Yeah, okay, a fence right here, okay.
It runs along here. There's a driveway on my property that goes right through here.
Okay.
And I have egress on there.
Okay, do you all see what Ledoux's talking about? Egress going from here, then then out to here?
Out to, yeah, right out to the street.
Out to the street, out to 1684.
Yeah. Andy Walker owned, was sold me the house. And so it was the Walker family living here with their barn here. He could, he could pull in a truck here, he could pull in his car here. He didn't have to go, he didn't have to go from here all the way around.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to us?
Beth Opaschinsky, 241 Pleasant Bay Road. So I'm
All right, could you say again, please?
Beth Opaschinsky, 241 Pleasant Bay. I'm not a direct abutter, but I live on the intersection.
So you're across the street.
I'm across the street, right.
Right, okay.
I don't know all the logistics of, you know, if this didn't happen, they sold the property, could a commercial property come in? But my biggest concern would be keeping that neighborhood residential. We have a horrible intersection. Last week, we had two accidents in the space of 18 hours. And if a commercial property somehow is able to come in there, I have concerns about increased traffic with trucks, say if it's a landscaping company, say a tree removal company, they're parking their trucks, they're in and out. It's just, you know, increasing the traffic. I have literally run out of my front yard when huge trucks are coming down the hill and they're out of control. And I'm like, they're going to come in the yard and I'm going to get killed. I really would like to see that that is residential and that, you know, we eliminate the possibility of a commercial enterprise coming in there. The Turks are great neighbors. They're committed to the community, they're year-round residents, they add a lot in that respect. It's not another empty house. And I just think that helps to enhance the neighborhood all around. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else in the public who wants to speak to this? Okay. Has anyone else in the public, Chair Asti Alpikian, for any final comments?
Sure, just briefly, again, I appreciate the perspective of the neighbors. But I think, you know, again, I think residential house there would be, in our mind, a real improvement overall. I understand that commercial structure hasn't bothered them to date. But, you know, again, I think given, if we're looking at it from a zoning perspective, it'd be a residential use in a residential neighborhood and residential zoning district, which is certainly more compatible than what's there now. With regard to the easement, I have not done a title search of Ms. Ledoux's property, so I'm not sure what exists. I would just state that the fact if there is an easement across the lot doesn't affect the ability to, for the variance application or for it to be buildable, you just can't build over the location of the easement because you can't block it if it exists, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so with that, that would be our final comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any additional questions from board members?
No.
No.
I just wanted to clarify one thing that, like, one of, I don't remember exactly which neighbor mentioned it, but the condition being to keep it commercial, I didn't see that in the documents.
Condition, I'm sorry.
Somebody asserted that one of your conditions is to keep it zone commercial or keep it
They may have been referring to that if it's, I mean, if we can't use it as a single-family structure cannot be built on it, then it would likely just continue with the commercial use.
Right, if you can't.
Yeah, I mean, not a condition, but that's just
Granted this, it's going to be
That's just the reality of the situation in terms of being able to use the property.
All right, so, um, so far, the information submitted as part of this application to incorporate any decision we do, just wanted to go over what the documentation is we have here. We received a notice of appeal and application petition for public hearing. We have a supplement to the application and summary of reasoning by the agent, James Nocross. We have a plan of land dated July 5, 2024 by Paul E. Switzer and certified on August 24, 2024, and revised January 27, 2025. Plan only dated August 22, 2024, also by Paul E. Switzer and certified 8/22/24. And we have a building permit denial letter from the building commissioner dated October 10, 2024. So so far, the finding of facts that have been presented in the case is the lot is located in the Arizonian District. The proposed panhandle lot at 1684 Orleans Road will have an area of 29,515 square feet, short of the 40,000 square feet lot area requirement. 1684 will have frontage on Orleans Road of 35 feet. Oh, and and what is the length? You're, you're, you have to be under 300 feet. What is the length from the road onto the back of the lot?
It's 143 feet. If you look at the, you have the division plan, we'll call it where it's labeled Lot 2 in the panhandle, they have a dimensions, the mentions are shown both width and length for that panhandle.
Well, I'm looking at the top of the thing here, first of all, looking at the left going towards, let's see, the north, 77 degrees, whatever, and it says 202 feet, 65, 202, 65. And then I've got another notation of 142, 42.
Right, that's the northern, north side of the panhandle. That'd be the distance, the length of that panhandle, the 142.42 on the north, 143.81 on the south.
All right, okay, help me out here.
Yeah.
I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, the code is that the panhandle situation can't be more than 300 feet. So we're saying that, and then the code of 300 feet, that's strictly to do with the panhandle size? Not the rest of the lot?
It's not the total.
Just the panhandle, okay. So the panel there is 142, okay. So the panhandle length is 142, 42, which meets the requirement for the panhandle lot where the width is 35 feet and the length is not greater than 300 feet. Thank you. All right. Appreciate the education, folks, it's always helpful. In conjunction with this application, a 4,999 square foot section of 240 Pleasant Street will be subdivided to combine with 1684 Orleans Road with 35 feet of frontage on Orleans Road, where no frontage currently exists, and increase and increase the size of 1684 Orleans to 29,515. 240 Pleasant Road will remain, Pleasant Bay Road, excuse me, will remain conforming at 40,894 square feet. There appears to be really no impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion with this, turning this into a lot. But any, anything further? Did I get all the documents that are in the case and any other, for the, any other points?
We need to include the overview of the attorney.
Oh, I already have that, actually, this is a new one. So this would be, this, I would consider this to be in the summary of reasoning by the agent.
Is additional information from the review of the lot size calculations?
Okay. All right, so we have two supplements to the application, the summary of reasoning by the agent, okay? And neither one is dated, but we are referring to the second form. Okay, so there are two of them. Any other documents you want to add to this?
No, thank you.
Okay, sure. Conditions of approval. Now, I didn't ask this question, given the timeframe, what do you feel would be your timeframe on doing this? And if you, actually, this, we're just, we're just approving the lot tonight. So there's nothing to do with time and so forth, okay? So the condition approvals that I recommended here is the review approval of the planning, the Howard Planning Board will be required.
Correct. And then, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just
Go ahead.
Also the abutter, the request they had, if you wanted to include those about the no construction of a ADU on the property in addition to the single-family home was a request they had made.
I suppose I can put that in, it's just not, it's not a condition of the board, I don't think we can.
Yeah, I don't think it applies to the lot.
We can't, we can't, I don't believe we can do that. Maybe I'm wrong. I will, I will look at, for anybody who wants to give me some advice on that, Attorney Croll.
Thank you, Attorney Bill Croll. I talked with Mr. and Mrs. Bernstein this morning, and they said that they had worked that out with the Turks and that they would agree to this proposal as long as it had the condition that there would be no ADU on either one of the two lots.
Any additional ADUs?
There already is one, right?
There's currently a second structure on 240 Pleasant Bay.
I, I believe that the applicant, I mean, the board is still have an opportunity to to protest whatever, you know, file, file an appeal regarding what we do here. I don't believe we're in a position where we can actually require that as a board, that no ADU be built.
I don't see any harm in doing it, but I see a harm in
All right, I'll tell you what, here's what we use as making a finding of facts.
May I say something?
Sure.
I don't know if the board can condition the property to never have an ADU for something that's permitted by right in that zoning district.
Correct. I don't think we can do that.
Right, or Mr. Chairman, if I could? I do think that because you're going to be creating a deed for this property, you could self-deed restrict no ADUs. And that should fulfill the need for your, for your neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, the Turks are committed to what they've stated to the Bernstein, so I'm assuming we can certainly work it out without the boards having to
You can, you can, you're going to self-create a deed, so you can go ahead and create a deed.
No, that's a very, that's a very good point, yeah. We could certainly work that out privately.
I just don't feel we can do it as
No, that's fine, yep.
A violation of terms of the conditions of special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard Zoning Bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7 of the Howard Zoning Bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Does that apply since the variance?
Actually, go ahead.
The neighbors, justifiably so, are very concerned with regard to the ground this building is constructed upon and certainly around it because of, you know, of an oil business.
Can we make it a condition that a test of the ground be made as to assure the neighbors whether it is or is not?
I believe that would be a function of the planning board, not, not us to do that. We're here looking at the lot. I mean, that's my first, my first考虑, I haven't dealt with this before, so this is new territory for me, all right? Any opinion, Rachel, on that?
No.
Because it will, this will be going for, this has to get reviewed by the planning board. And I think
It's outside the scope of our authority.
Yeah, we can't, we can't require that, okay. So I think the planning board would need to address that issue.
Right, and there's also the Health Department, I guess, in terms of any, I mean, we have to, they'll have to do test holes for septic and everything else, so there would be some additional work required for that, so.
Yeah, I understand the concerns. And, but tonight, we're looking at not authorizing any construction. We're looking at the authorization or the, the relief to grant this as a panhandle lot. I think your hands are outside of our authority, I believe so. All right, I ask for a motion to accept the document of finding of facts.
So moved.
And that was, who seconded, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of the fact that to accept the documents and finding of facts and conditions of approval? Have they stipulated?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, let's go back for a second, I apologize, gentlemen, whether or not we, we actually do not need a violation of terms of the condition of special, you know, this is not, that's a, that's a mistake. So only, only So, only, only condition is the review of the Howard's Planning Board.
We need to close the public meeting first, before that.
Yeah, I know, but we haven't got to that yet, but, okay? But, so let's, we do that, we're only going to have one condition, which is the review and approval of the Howard's Planning Board. Go ahead. All right, again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Ken and John, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so obviously, tonight, there's the five of us will be voting on this, there'll be Al, myself, Chris Murphy, Sean August, and Ken Dixon, and the chair will entertain a motion to close discussion, as far as public discussion. Actually, I want to just, before we, we close the open, we close the public hearing, I'd like to now entertain some additional discussion by the board, all right?
I have none.
I have nothing.
So, one of the, you know, back when I first started, the predecessor, Dave, he'd sent out things occasionally, it's interesting, there's a lot of case law invariances, obviously, in his interpretations, but one interesting one, existing buildings that have remaining value are not well-suited to conforming uses, haven't found sufficient to make it a unique lot, so much adds some support to it, whether there was a hardship is, I guess, a question, but-
Sure.
That's Board of Appeals in Wareham, that was a case for them.
Could you read it one more time?
Unusual, unusual existing buildings that are not structured, that are structurally sound, have remaining value and are not well-suited to conforming uses, so commercial and residential, have also been found sufficient apart from all other considerations of establishing the uniqueness of the lot in question.
I believe, as far as the discussion here, that we're looking for a dimensional variance.
Correct.
Okay. Well, again, I have concerns as far as creating a, a lot through a variance in this kind of situation, although I do appreciate the uniqueness of what's happened here with the existing building, and the fact that, hearing some of the neighbors, as well as the discussion from the board here, that we may have a unique situation regarding this building, and that taking that, and I'm assuming this building is going to be coming down, the existing building on there.
If they're to build a, a home, a single, oh, yeah, Billy will not be staying there if they're building a house.
But, in consideration of the impact it will have for the neighborhood and eliminating the commercial structure, I realize we have one a butter that feels that's fine, but I think that for the character of the neighborhood, it, it may be the, the ultimate way to go, you know, for this case. All right, so, the, so now I'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, Ken, vote to close discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think, Al, if you'd like to make a motion?
Case number twenty-two-five-zero-one, Daniel and Jessica Turk, through the attorney James Narcos, owns a property sixteen eighty-four Orleans Road, assesses map one thirteen W one dash two and two forty Pleasant Bay Road, assesses map one-one-three parcel W two in an RR zoning district. The applicant has been granted a variance.
Dimensional variance.
Dimensional variance in the RR district.
No.
I, I got it.
Get it?
Yeah, the variance three twenty-five, attachment two, table two, area regulation, create a new variance-
New panhandle lot.
Create a new variance lot.
A new panhandle lot.
Oh, excuse me, panhandle lot. Having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the Howard's zoning bylaws three twenty-five fifty-two, MGL Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Ten, due to the shaping conditions of the land and the failure of the board to make this grant results in substantial hardship to the applicant, the board further finds the conditions and specifics of the property, of this property, and does not generally affect the entire district, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good by granting this variance, that it is granting will not nullify or subsequently derogate from the intent of the purpose of the bylaw granting this new panhandle lot, and all dimensions shall be in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. All work and establishment of this panhandle lot shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. First-
Just one.
Yeah, the approval of the conservation department is required prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Excuse me, that's the building, my apologies, the planning board.
Excuse me, the approval of the-
Planning board.
Planning board.
Is required prior to the issuance of the building permit. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Great, thank you very much.
A pleasure. Thank you, gentlemen. A pleasure. Attorney, we'll, when this gets, the decision gets drafted, I'll have it sent out to you for review of any, if, in case we missed anything that you wanted in the decision.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call next case.
Case number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-two, DMTL LLC care of William Kroll and Michael Donovan. The owner of the property located at ten Route Twenty-eight, assesses map ten parcel C four in the CH one RM in West Howard, D C P C.
Joining you, Mr.-
District, the applicant seeks a special permit for the alternative variance from the three twenty-five alteration or extension of others, other structures, able through area regulation to construct in addition and renovate a pre-existing non-conforming barn pursuant to the zoning bylaws three twenty-five fifty-two and fifty-four in Mass. General Law, Forty-Eighth Section Six and Ten. Board of Health submitted comments indicating, as they had no record of septic system serving the barn, a fully compliant septic permit will be required prior to the building permit being signed off. The planning department has submitted comments that the applicant will need to come to the site, plan review, special permit based upon the scope of the work at number ten Route Twenty-eight. Police Department has submitted no comment, no other comments from the town departments or butters have received.
Okay, I'd like to ask the applicant to represent themselves and any person assisting in your presentation.
Michael Donovan of Kroll and Donovan and Bill Kroll of Kroll and Donovan. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just one kind of point of order, there was, the last one listed on the agenda for today was also our firm, that had been withdrawn, I just wanted to make sure it's been resubmitted and it's going to be up for the next hearing.
You're referring to Thirty-three Dunes Road?
Yes.
Yes, it's been, it's already been sent in for advertising for the next hearing.
Okay, so, so it's been taken off of tonight, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, tonight, we're going to have to read it and indicate the fact that it's been a withdrawal.
Okay.
That's all we're doing.
Well, that, that's fine, we just wanted to make sure there wasn't, if there's someone in the audience thought it was going forward tonight or something.
Oh, I should have mentioned that earlier on.
Right.
Folks, is there anyone here for Thirty-three Dunes Road? Okay, thank you. Typically, I mention that at the beginning of the meeting and I forgot to, so, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so, we represent, it's, it's LLC that owns it, but the principals are over here are Tanya and Dematar Noteva, that's their building, and Rachel had put together the summary, so I'll try not to repeat everything, but it is a unique lot in that it's narrow, it's long, it goes back, and it's in two different zoning districts. For our purposes tonight, it's the commercial zoning district, CH one is where all of the work that we're proposing to have done is all within that commercial zone, so the residential zone that's to the north of it is not part of what we're seeking to do here tonight. It's, as you can see, there's a, a main building on kind of the eastern side of the property, and then the barn is on the southwestern side from where that main building is. Both buildings now are retail antique shops. We're only concerned, the only work that's being done is on that barn that's on the west side of the property. We've submitted the site plans and the building plans, and the work that's proposed is basically four pieces of work. There is a, on the first floor, a new bathroom and an internal staircase from the first floor up to the second floor, and that's outside any, as I'll get to, outside any of the setbacks, so it complies with the setbacks that work. The second floor is going to have an addition, right now, hopefully you could see from the building plans, right now, there's two floors on the west side of the building and only one floor on the east side of the building. So, they're looking to put an addition above the area that has a first, just one floor, and that's approximately seven hundred square feet, that's going to go right on top of that, and again, all the work there is, complies with all the setbacks. The third portion of the work is a new staircase, an external staircase, that's on the north side of the, the building, basically where the building has a jut out on the north side, and so that's going to be an external staircase that's going to go up to the second floor, and again, that complies with all the setbacks as well. And then the last part is the existing second floor, they were going to renovate that, the internal part of it, as part of the additions that are going on to the eastern part of the building. So, simply put, there are no changes to any of the setbacks or any of the building height, and the proposed building and site coverages are conforming. So, the existing building coverage is twenty percent, and it will remain conforming at twenty-point-three percent, it's a thirty percent maximum, and the site coverage, when it was shot, was at seventy-two-point-five, for some reason, they came out above what we anticipated to be seventy, they made some changes to it to get it down to seventy so that it is conforming, because there's a seventy percent maximum in that, in that district.
Attorney, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Your application says seventy-point-two, it doesn't reflect seventy?
Yeah, that's a mistake.
It has a point-two.
But it's, you're telling me it's seventy?
Yeah.
Seventy on the drawing.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Bad, bad typing.
Like the chair made mistakes in the last case, your lot at least one mistake.
All right, well, I used it up.
So, I'll-
Okay, and then, the, so what we're, what the issue is, is the setback on the, on the, on the setback, now I'm confused, north, the northwest side, where it's two-point-three feet, that's what's making it non-conforming. And so, it's, it's a ten-foot setback, so it's short, you know, approximately eight feet, meaning, meaning it comes into the setback approximately eight feet on that area. Other than that, all the other setbacks are conforming, and as I indicated, a large, three of the four components of the work are all exclusively in those sections that are complying with the setback.
Can I just jump in for one second?
Sure.
Right. Where the, you have a setback problem, that's where you're doing the renovations, correct?
The internal-
Right.
Yeah.
And there's already existing structure there.
There is.
So, the renovations are being done in a, in a, in a pre-existing non-conformity that's, that's proved.
Correct.
So, you're just looking to add additional headspace within the setback, but within the, without changing the existing setback.
Correct, no changes to the existing setback.
Right, I just want to make, make sure everyone's clear on that, okay?
Yep, I likewise want everyone to be clear on that. So, the, the building department's denial letter cited three twenty-five fifty-four A seven, and in that section, it, it didn't identify which particular section it was saying applied, there's a A and a B, and so I had set forth in my papers there, we, we feel that A one and A two are both met here in this instance, and therefore, under that section, it allows you to have it as a right if you can meet those criteria. I think what, and I just wanted to go through those criteria quickly, that, that, there's two, so it's A one and A two. A two says the non-conformance concerns the size of the lot in question, or the frontage, or an encroachment of the existing structure. And so here, we do have that, we have both, that the lot in question is non-conforming, not, not the lot, I'm sorry, the encroachment of the existing structure that we just talked about. The existing structure is two-point-three feet in an area that there's a ten-foot setback.
Right.
So, that, that part, I think it's clear that has been met. The, number one says the proposed addition/extension will conform to current setbacks and coverage for the zoning district, and so, all of the work that's done other than that eight-foot area is going to be conforming with all the current setbacks. So, what we're left with is the work, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, I was, finish, finish up, and I've got a bunch to say.
Sure. So, so what we're left with is that eight-foot swath along the, the wall there, that's two-point-three feet setback area, and what it's saying, as I read the section, it says the proposed addition slash extension, and that's a defined term under Section Two, and we think the work that's being done in that eight-foot section doesn't fit within that extension. that extension.
Okay.
You seem to have a question. Go ahead.
Well, no, but here's, just a, let me, let me wait till you finish your presentation. I'll jump in on my comments.
Okay. So, so I think that may be where, why it was kicked here to the ZBA and what may be unclear, in a gray area here, as to whether, because there's some work being done in that eight-foot area, that we need to, we don't comply with that section and we therefore need a variance. So, I just wanted to be clear. First, we believe everything else, we don't think there's dispute about all the other work, the first-floor bathroom in addition, the internal staircase, the external staircase, the 700 square feet, all of that clearly complies with this section. The only part that is questionable appears is that eight-foot section along the wall. That's an internal renovation. So, we would submit that if you look at the definition, it says, "Construction, reconstruction, or other action resulting in a change in the structural parts or height or number of stories or size or use or location of a structure." And we would say just renovating the inside of a pre-existing structure doesn't fit within that definition. There's no structural parts that are being changed. There's no height being changed. This number of stories is not being changed. The size, use, or location is not being changed. So, we would say that just internal does not come within the definition, and therefore, we think the whole project falls within that section.
Are you, you referring to 325-54A? Is that?
54, yeah, 7A, 7A.
Right. That's the key, that's the key one.
7A1.
Yeah, I think we're all, that's what was cited in the denial letter.
I think the only reason he cited that is because he doesn't think it meets those two, subparagraph 1 and 2. And then, subparagraph B says that all of the non-conforming structures will require variance.
Right.
I think that's the only reason that's cited.
Well, and, but I agree. I think that is why it was cited. And, and I think, I think the thought is, we're here under B, and I'm going to argue that we should pass under B or that we submit that, that we do qualify for that, but.
When you say B, you mean under 1?
7A2?
7A4.
You're looking at.
7B, not 7A.
It's 7B.
Yeah.
Right. I think, I think what the building commissioner is saying is, he doesn't believe it fits within 7A, and therefore, we need to go to the ZBA for 7B.
And you think it fits within 7A?
And I'm, I'm going to argue both. Right, what I'm arguing is, I think it does fit within 7A. Clearly, all the work, except for the work in that eight-foot area, does fall within, meet the requirements of 7A1 and 2. And the work that's done in that eight-foot area is not the addition on the second floor, it's not staircases, it's nothing that's, fits the definition of being structural or changing height or changing the number of stories or the size or use or location. And therefore, I'm saying it, even that eight-foot area falls within that. So, therefore, we think that it should be approved as of right under Section 35, I mean, And then, I would submit, if the board does not find that, that adds to that eight-foot section, that we would move to B and say, where it says, "All other non-conforming structures shall require a variance," and we would seek a variance for the portion that doesn't fit within that section A, which we submit is that eight-foot strip along, along the line. And we would submit that, that we can, that the variance, we've just talked about the variance standard here earlier, I won't belabor the point. But we would say here that we can meet that standard because of the unusual shape of the lot where it's narrow and goes way back and then is dissected with the two different zoning districts within there.
Yeah.
And then, the barn is already located in that, close to that western lot line. The petitioner here is, is not changing the footprint, other than the staircase up to the second floor, and is trying to use that. What's used now up there is, it's used as just storage space. And what they'd like is to make better use of that space there by making these changes to have office space up there to assist in running their business. And we'd say it's not a, that it would be a substantial hardship if they're not allowed to make use of the area that's there now on the second floor of what's already a pre-existing building. And that the relief requested could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. We would note that the only nonconformity is that one setback that's existed for many, many years. This building was built back in, I think it's the 1850s. It's not being altered, it's not increasing the encroachment in any way. It's quite a distance from any other buildings on that side, you know, in the lot below them. And therefore, it wouldn't hurt the public good by allowing just the renovation of the inside part of a building that's already pre-existing.
Right.
Thank you.
I agree. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? Hearing none. Okay. It.
May I add one comment?
Sure. Absolutely. Part of the team.
Part of the team. As are the petitioners. We're a very nice young couple. We've been working with them for probably a year now and, and hardworking and run a very successful building business. And this would really help them out in running their business to have more office space on the second floor.
Actually, I jumped the gun here a little bit. Now that they're done here, I want to stop with the board on comments.
I don't have a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm supportive of this. The only thing, I, I know we went a lot through discussion about 325-54A. The only thing that I, I know you, what you always do, cover your bases, is request either a variance or a special permit, but that section specifically says it has to be a variance.
The section B, yes.
Yeah.
If you get there.
Yeah. But again, I, I have no problem with it, but I think it's just, it's spelled out that it has to be a variance.
Unless, unless you satisfy A.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't need to get to B.
Yeah, no, no, I hear you saying that. Chris?
Yeah, I, it seems to me it fits with the name.
Yeah. Al?
I have no problem with it.
So, I got a couple. And I actually, ahead of time, I drafted two different possible motions. I personally feel the fact that the best course here, and I, I do believe that this falls under 7A, and I do feel, in my opinion, that, well, first of all, we can't go for a special permit because it.
Right. It's either under 7A as a matter of right or it's a variance.
We're not allowed a special permit.
You agree with that?
And you were, you were calling attention to the board on 325-541A and so forth, which is really, is all about residential, single-family homes or multifamily homes. You know, it just doesn't, we got to turn the page on, on the beginning of, of A regarding alterations and extension of single or multifamily houses. You, you went into A and, and 1 and 2 and so forth. But I feel the fact that either it's a variance, but I personally feel the fact that we need to overturn the commissioner's decision. And in my opinion, the best course of action is to overturn the decision versus going for a variance. And I, just so we can kind of look at that, because we don't often overturn a commissioner's decision, I've drafted, is, page one is the overturn the decision of the commissioner, and page two is, um, page two is, in matter of fact, we have a copy of your attorney. If I could grab one?
Yeah.
Did I get two copies of this? Oh, you got two copies? Oh, okay. I need to get, you, oh, sorry.
Which is part of your authority as a board, is to, you have the authority to overturn the.
It's about time.
Decision of the commissioner. Because almost all of these petitions were appealing the decision of the commissioner when he issues the denial letter.
That's right.
So, we're going to you.
Come on. Let's, let's move forward while we're young. But seriously, I, and I just want you guys to read what I wrote out here. And the, I feel better about overturning the decision, given the fact that with the putting the new construction meets all the setback requirements. And all they're asking to do is to renovate an area that's inside of a wall that's already been approved. And I don't think we need to go for a variance to accomplish that. And I do believe that on, under 7, "A pre-existing non-conforming structure, other than a single or two-family residential structure, may be altered, extended by right if the building commission determines that it meets the following criteria." And, and I, I firmly believe the fact that 7, you know, on 7A there, I feel that this project meets that criteria, and I feel the fact that he's turned it down because he felt that it didn't, and I don't agree. Now, I don't know whether the rest of you agree or not, but my opinion is, and so take a moment to read what I wrote here, and.
I, I think if we're not agreeing under 7A2, I'm in agreement. If it's 7A1.
No, I think it's 7A10, "The nonconformity concerns the size of the lot in question and/or frontage of said lot and/or encroachment of existing structure."
Yeah, I would agree that.
Any comments on what I've written here as far as?
No, I'm agreeing with it.
Now, I have not, this, I'm not making a motion yet. This is strictly just a draft for this, for, for review. While we're in discussion here.
Yeah. I, I think, so the first page, I think under number 2 at the bottom, we have 1, 2, and 3, the conditions.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, granting of this, the granting, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's a typo.
Shouldn't it just say, "The issuance of building permits"?
Yeah, the grant, you know, the issuance of a building permit is subject to site, yeah. Okay. Yeah, get rid of the granting of this variance. I was kind of copying things back and forth.
Yeah.
All right, so it should be the issuance of the building permit. So, you get rid of that.
That's fine.
On 2, you just get rid of the first part. Any other comments on this? So, I've got a little discussion here. Are we in favor of going with the overturn the decision?
Okay. I just asked a clarification though.
Yeah.
That wasn't the only section that he cited in his refusal, right?
I realize that, yeah.
So, even if we overturn that one.
I, I, the overturn here, we're saying overall, we're, we're turning, this thing, this is showing. Oh, I see, because I got any, meets the requirements of 325, 7A. Let's see, what else is he?
325-55C1, which is any floor area expansion of any structure, expansion of, other than parking, serving any of the following, commercial, industrial, multifamily, educational, municipal use, or personal wireless service, or the creation of a drive-up window, basically has to go for site plan approval.
Yes. Well, I think he has as a condition that we have to go for site plan.
I have a, all right, so you'd have to leave that condition.
So, yeah, that condition is going to be in there.
You know, the issuance of building permit, subject to site plan review and approval of the planning board.
So, then all we would be overturning is the 325-5487 reference.
Right. Yeah. I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it should be a slight dunk at the planning board, but it does.
It does have to go, yeah.
It has to go to the planning board.
Because you're creating new habitable space, you know.
And, and achieving the footprint, yeah.
On the footprint, and you need to go for the planning board.
Yep.
For that.
It's just site, it's just site plan review.
I don't think they're going to tell you where to put your lo, your closets, they're just.
Right.
You know, but obviously, you're also going in front of, need to go in front of the.
Health.
Health Department.
Yeah.
For septic.
Yep.
Right. But with the planning board, with having the second floor, they're going to want to see it and see where the parking, existing parking is and whether it's adequate.
Yeah, that's, that's their call.
So, that's really where they're going to focus on.
That's up to them. And it's up to the health department for approving the septic.
Right. So, yeah, and as far as the health, you know, you could add that if you want, but we already know, I mean, it's in, however you want to do it.
Actually, you're absolutely right. It, we also need to.
Need to make that a, I mean, they, no.
It's part of the process. We can't, we have to make that a condition.
Yeah, I don't, we have to put it as a condition.
Well, we don't, we typically do, the fact that you need to go in front of the, we generally have in the past, but we just, guess we can or cannot. Rachel, should I be conditioning?
I think it's up to the board. It is part of the building permit review process, though.
Yeah.
The health department would review and approve.
Right, so you're not going to issue, so, even, without it being on condition, it's still going to happen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so we can, we eliminate that. You're right. Thank you, Chris.
Really what we're saying is that overturning his decision on 3, as, as regards to the 325-54A7, a variance is not required.
Yeah, I, I think we're just, we're overturning his decision. Right, right.
And it's as of right under the other section.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So, other than that correction, and thank you for catching that typo, any other comments on the, what I've written here?
You think it looks good?
All right, let me rip through our paces here. So, we're all in agreement that if we get, when we get to the motion, it's going to be for overturning. Is that correct, everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now I should ask, are we in the public? Hearing none, there isn't. And so, part of this, what's been incorporated, submitted for this application and incorporated for the decision is going to be, let me wait for one second. So, the information submitted, notice appeal, application of petition for public hearing was submitted. We received a narrative and summary of reasoning. We have an existing and proposed conditions plot plan by TS Land Surveying, Inc., dated August 19, 2024. Also, proposed addition and renovation plans by Ted Smith Architect LLC dated September 12, 2024, and a building permit denial letter dated October 14, 2024. I believe that's all the documents. Anybody disagree with that?
No.
Okay. Findings of facts. The lot is located in the CH1 and RM1 zone. The portion of the lot in the C1 district is conforming with 33,401 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required. The proposed work relates solely to the existing barn located to the southwest of the main building, which is conforming regarding all setbacks. Proposed addition/extension will conform to current setbacks and coverage for the zoning district in which the existing structure and the addition/extensions are located in the non-conference, non-conformance concerns the size of the lot in question and/or its frontage or said lot and, and on the encroachment of the existing structure. The proposed addition and renovations, I'm kidding, proposed addition will not be within the setbacks, and resulting building coverage remain conforming at 20.3%. The existing site coverage is non-conforming at 72.5%, but will be conforming at 7% with the proposed addition, renovations, and ground removal and relocation of sheds. Petitioner is only using land in the C one district for its setback and coverage calculation. However, petitioner does not waive his position that he has a right to use the land in both zoning districts for the purpose of calculating coverages at which would be significantly more advantageous to it. And took that out of, out of the narrative that was presented. Okay? Though it wasn't discussed during the meeting, but it wasn't your narrative. The conditions of approval of the board will impose as follows. We didn't discuss this, guys, but we, I believe the fact that the, you're going to be able to maintain all the construction vehicles in the city.
Yes.
Okay. That for life of the approved project, all construction vehicles would be parked on the applicant's property and not any public street or road.
Do we need conditions if we're overturning the?
Um.
The decision?
That's a great question, I think.
As a right.
As a right, we just, we don't need the conditions. Alright. Next time we overturn, I'll know better.
It's refreshing.
It's always nice to learn at every meeting. So we have no conditions.
No.
Alright, so the chair makes a motion to accept the documents, finding the facts, and, and no conditions.
Second.
Yeah, stipulated, second by Chris. Can I vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five to nothing?
I was peeking over your shoulder, you, you said RM one, but you have a bit, it's RM, which is the correct thing, there is no RM.
I said RM.
Yeah.
Oh, did I say R, R one? Okay. Thank you. Like to close public hearing, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ken, and second by Al. Vote on the closing, all in favor? Chair asks, voting on this case was going to be Al, myself, Chris Murphy, John August, and Ken Dixon. And chair will entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Okay, John, motion, Al, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, no, entertain any further discussion by the board?
No comment.
Okay, alright, none? And I think we're ready to, so, here a motion from the. You're going to use this one here. You're going to, yeah, you're using this one. Yeah, okay, good.
Case up at twenty twenty-five dash zero two, DMTL LLC, William Crowe, Michael Donovan. Owners.
You do need to keep that in there. Cross that out. Zeno.
Alright. Owner of the property located at ten Route twenty-eight, assesses map ten, parcel C four, and a CH one RM West Howard DCP zoning district. The Howard Board of Appeals hereby overturns the decision of the Howard Building Commissioner to deny the issuance of a permit, application to construct, conduct.
Construct condition.
In addition, and renovate pre-existing non-conforming barn. Is determination of the Howard Board of Appeals that the application for the building permit is a reasonable matter of right. Granting of the building permit is without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying the substantially derogating form of the intent and purpose of MGL Chapter forty-eight, Sections three, six, and ten. Any relief not expressly granted here on two. It doesn't come in here either.
Here on the, is hereby denied, not. Got to keep that in there.
Want to leave it in?
Yeah.
Okay, any relief not expressly granted here on two is hereby denied. All work shall be performed. What the plan submitted with the application, said grant and approval are the subject of the following conditions. The proposed addition will not be within setback. The interior renovation will be within the setback, and the proposed project meets the requirements of three twenty-five fifty-four A, Section seven A, permitted by right. Building coverage will remain conforming with the removal of the designated grassy, grass gravel area and relocation of the shed per site plan. Site coverage will be, become conforming with CH one zoning. The appeals board's decision is further consistent with the Howard Bylaws of Chapter, National Laws, Chapter forty-eight, as there will be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a conforming lot. Any relief not expressly granted here on two is hereby denied. All works will be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application and.
And you don't need to do the, you don't need to do the conditions.
Said grant approval have no conditions.
Right. Do I have a, a second on the?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have your denial, or your overturn.
Overturn, yeah.
We got a positive for one.
Thank you.
Positive denial.
So there was no historic commission rating on that, like historic structure?
No, probably it's not, because it's not residential? Or they didn't think it was consequential enough, like?
Bull barn? Jay, thanks for stopping by.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay, the next case. One second here.
Alright, case number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, Jimmy and Michelle Goncalves, through their attorney, William Crowe, excuse me, William Crowe, and Michael Donovan. The owners of the property located fourteen pasture lane, assesses map thirty-two and parcel F one dash three in the RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or any alternative, a variance from three twenty-five A, one A, alteration or extension of a single-family, two-family, or single, two-family residential structure, three twenty-five, attachment to Table two area regulation, three twenty-five, Attachment three, Table three, height and bulk regulation, for the renovation of addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw, three twenty-five fifty-two, fifty-four, and Mass General Law Forty-eight, Section ten. Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself as these are neighbors and friends.
Okay. It's already been. Hold on. Yeah, you can, if you want. Start of the session here, just down to here as far as.
The Howard Police Department submitted comments indicating they had no concerns. Howard Board of Health submitted comments indicating that a Title V inspection conducted by a licensed Title V inspector will be required prior to the building permit sign-off, and no other comments from other town departments or others were received.
And, and as I go along in the sections where we vote and so forth, you know, also fill in it, in case I missed something, okay? Okay. Like to have the attorneys presenting the case, identify themselves, anyone assisting you?
Um, Michael Donovan and Bill Crowe from Crowe and Donovan Law. And the homeowner, Jamie Goncalves, is right here in the front. Okay, so this is a, a single-family house in the RR zoning district. And you can see it has, it's on the corner of pasture lane and Quarter, Cornerwood Drive. So there's two front setbacks, with the others being side setbacks. The front setbacks at twenty-five feet, and the side, twenty feet. The lot size is non-conforming, it's ten thousand two hundred square feet in a forty thousand square foot zone. The frontage is conforming, because it's, you get the frontage of both of those streets, so it's conforming, it's one eighty-nine. And the setback is two conforming and two not conforming. So, the east side, the pasture lane side, is non-conforming at twenty-one point six. That is going to have a porch added to it, and so that's going to go to, request is to go down to fifteen point five. So, a six-foot change there. And then the south setback is ten point one, and that's going to stay, that won't be any change to that. So those are the two non-conforming. And then the other two setbacks are conforming, the west setback is forty-two point two. And that's going down to thirty-three point one. That, that is an area there that there's a deck now, and the proposal is to replace the deck with a two-car garage. That's creating a reduction from forty-two to thirty-three, but still well over the twenty-foot setback requirement. And then the, on the north, the setback there is twenty-six point two, which is, again, conforming, it's in a twenty-five-foot zone setback. So the proposal is to add the front porch that's facing pasture lane, replace the deck with a proposed garage, and then there'll be internal renovations within the house. Most notably, there'll be renovations within the setback area on the south side, inside the house, in the basement. So it will be intensifying the non-conformity in that area. There's no new non-conformities, and there's, the east side will be intensified from the porch, but it's a six-foot increase in, or decrease in the setback there. So twenty-one point six to fifteen point five. The second intensification is the building coverage. So the building coverage is fifteen percent zone, and it's currently at eighteen point two. The addition of the porch and the extra area for the garage is going to raise it to twenty-two point five. So an increase of about four percent. And then we discussed that the, some of the renovations will be in the setback area on the south, within the, within the existing footprint, but, inside the house, but within that setback area. We would say that this is a case ripe for a special permit, that under the Gale case, the board has the permit, the authority to grant a special permit upon the finding that proposed work will not constitute substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. We would say that that, clear here, is just some tweaks being done to the exterior and then some internal work. There's no additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, or noise, or odor, congestion. And therefore, we would submit that special permit is warranted in this case.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Chair asks members of the board for their comments or questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. Ken?
Just a couple of comments, I did a property inspection while I was out there. And this is, it's a key lot or a corner lot on a cul-de-sac. I don't think it has any effect on the property values around it, other than potentially to increase it. It's certainly consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I looked at the, the front porch, and it's true that we're going to be decreasing the, the space there. Once again, looking at the other homes in the neighborhood, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a, a good improver for the neighborhood, and meets all the conditions of the Gale case.
Good, good review.
I would agree, I just have one question on the site coverage. How are you driving into the garage?
Over the grass.
Over the grass, it's going to be a grassed area?
Yeah.
The only way to keep underneath.
Yes, yep.
There'll be no parking on, on that grassed area?
It'd be in the garage, yeah.
All the parking would be in the garage. Yeah, it's a gray, it's a gray area on.
Yeah.
What, any area that you park on is considered lot coverage. So even if it's grass.
Yeah. Right now, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully someday, maybe.
I know you're removing the paved drive to get, to get there, but.
Yeah.
But for that, it would create a new non-conformity.
Yep, correct.
You can drive by every night, Mr. August, and see those cars will be parked.
Guarantee you, I will not.
In the garage.
I will not be doing that, but. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that, I wish right now we could approve driveways without affecting site coverage.
Material, yeah.
Someday.
That, that day is hopefully coming. So that's why the site coverage is only increasing by point one percent.
It's the removing the paved driveway.
Yeah, and the shed.
With the addition of the porch, okay, alright. What's, I mean, there's a factor to my decision here, where's the height of the proposed porch, any idea? The height of the proposed porch?
See, height is the, is the doorway.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so.
And timeframe for construction?
Probably start this summer, spring, summer.
Alright, so, gentlemen, given the neighborhood and so forth, if, when you do construction, are you going to be able to maintain all the, all the construction vehicles on the property?
We're going to put them on the Donahue's lot, that's where we're going to park them.
But seriously, I just, just want to know what the plan is here, and, and the question here is whether or not we need to require the, the date situation for exterior construction. Given the, the neighborhood, the Cul-de-sac, I, I don't think there's a lot of activity. What's our viewpoint here, folks?
See, we can pack them all, there's two parks on there, they say.
The whole town first. Area is really kind of secluded.
Right. Yeah, so.
Not going to cause any for a lot.
Alright, so we, might we note this? That being the case. All construction vehicles not being parked on the applicant's property, want to get rid of that. That's, if we look at page three, okay, get rid of B.
What was the outcome on the parking, the, the vehicles?
I think you just want fifty dollars a day, I, I, I don't know, I just not quite sure.
Construction vehicles? We can put them on the, on the lot, it's going to be a phased construction.
We're, we're not going to. The decision here, I believe, is the fact that we are not going to require for the life of the project for maintaining the, the construction vehicles on the, on, on the property.
Thank you.
Okay, obviously, whatever you can do to improve access, you know, not interfere with the access to neighbors, that's obvious, I know you guys won't, it's probably a good neighborhood, it, um, but I, I believe that that's fine. Getting, not having that, and I don't believe we need to have a date restriction either. Okay? So you're going to get rid of one, okay, alright. One and two, okay, actually, what's missing, I apologize, I missed it. Yeah, just, just talking to it, you need to add, when you do the final decision, you need to add. You need to add, when you do the final decision, you need to add in the conservation. Oh, we don't, that's out of the, excuse me, that's a mistake.
Yeah.
Mistake. Okay, so that's fine. All you need is the violation.
Just adding that all trucks will be parked on the Donahue property.
Yes. Actually, voice a little start, you want to go to eight, go back? Do you want to read in the documents? So, it's not over.
Information submitted.
Information submitted as part of the application, which will be incorporated in this decision include the notice of appeal slash application, public hearing, narrative summary of reasoning, plan of land showing proposed addition by Terry A. Warner, PLS, dated May 24, 2024, and revised November 7, 2024. Building plans by AB Design Collaborative dated November 15, 2024. Building permit denial letter dated December 2, 2024.
Any other documents that we, we missed here? Okay, no? Okay, go on. Findings of facts.
You want me to read all that as well?
Yeah.
So I'm taking over.
I'm just, I'm a little scratchy right now.
Okay, not a problem. So the findings of facts presented in this case are as follows. The lot is in the RR zone. The property is at the corner of pasture lane and Cornerwood Drive. The frontage along those two streets is conforming at 189.67 feet, where 150 feet is required. The lot is pre-existing, non-conforming in regards to area requirements with 10,200 square feet, but will remain unchanged. The property has two front setbacks, each of which requires a minimum of 25 feet. The easterly front side setback along pasture road is currently non-conforming at 21.6 feet and is proposed to be reduced to 15.5 feet due to the proposed porch. Northerly front setback along Cornerwood Drive is conforming at 26.2 feet and will remain unchanged. The remaining southerly setback is currently non-conforming at 10.1 feet and will remain unchanged. The west setback is conforming at 42 feet and will remain so. What is that, 33.1?
Will remain, I'm sorry.
Remain conforming at 33.
Existing building coverage is currently non-conforming at 18.5% with 15% maximum and will remain non-conforming at 22.5%. Site coverages are conforming and will remain so, conforming going from 24.8 to 24.9, where 25% is the maximum. The proposed project will result in an intensification of the existing non-conforming easterly front setback to the, to the addition of the front porch and the creation of additional habitable space within the required 20-foot southerly setback due to the proposed addition, additional furnished space in the southerly portion of the basement. The addition and renovations will not create any negative, any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion.
Any discussion on any other items? Anyone?
No.
Findings of facts? Okay. So we get rid of, there's no way, and the only proposed condition would be violation of terms and conditions.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. We accept the documents, findings of facts, and conditions of, the conditional approval as stipulated?
Second.
Second by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Voting to closing?
Aye.
Approved for nothing. Voting of the case would be myself, Chris Murphy, John August, and Ken Dixon. I'm going to make an assumption that you're not looking for a straw poll before we go forward.
Yeah. Just reminding the board it has to be unanimous.
Yes, okay. Any, I entertain motion now for, to close discussion?
So moved.
Vote on a motion, close discussion. Okay?
Approved for nothing.
Any, any further discussion by the board?
No.
Nope, okay. So I'd like to ask for the standby clerk, clerk, to read the, I just want to make sure you've done all the adjustments down.
Yep. Yeah, no changes there.
Okay.
Case number 2025-03, Jamie and Michelle Goncalves. Is that the pronunciation? Care of William D. Crowell Esquire and Michael D. Donovan Esquire, P.O. Box 185, Harwichport, Massachusetts, 02646. Owner of the property located at 14 pasture lane, assessor's map 32, parcel F1-34, in the RR zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from sections 325-54A1A, alteration or extension of single or two-family residential structures. 325 dash, I'm missing something there.
325-52 and 54.
Okay. Doesn't say it on here. 52 and 54? No, up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
325 dash.
Okay, you're right.
Should be on the application.
Okay, go ahead, just go for it. I'll get it correct.
For A.
Sorry. To be, to be filled in. Attachment 2, Table 2, area regulations, and 325 dash, and section 325, attachment 3, table 3, heightened bulk regulations for a renovation of, in addition to their pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaws, section 325-52 and 54, and MGL, chapter 40A, section 6. Granting is consistent with Gale, Dietrich, and related cases, as there will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, and as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following condition. A violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Harwich zoning bylaw pursuant to general law 40, section 40A, or 40A, section C, and the Harwich zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
That'd be section seven. Okay. Can I have a second for the motion? Any further discussion by the board? Vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved for nothing? You have your?
Thank you. If the board would like a little change of pace and have a one-minute history of this property, I could volunteer that if you'd like.
I, I need that excellent idea.
What's that?
That's an excellent idea.
Okay. So if you look at the, the upper right corner of the plan, and it shows you the location, Gorham Road, Cornerwood Road, Long Road. So the surveyor, Terry Warner, who is my younger sister, and I grew up on Long Road, directly due north from this property, and this whole area, this whole subdivision in the 60s, when we were growing up, was Ted Hunt's cornfield. This was all just a big cornfield, tomato patch, and strawberry patch. And in like 1962, Charlie Thomas and Doug Gardner bought that cornfield and developed all this. But way back when, it was a cornfield. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Of course, you're welcome. I thought it was just for reading the motion. I figured you were up to the task.
Well, see, the next case, our view's not changing.
No. Our apologies.
Perhaps you should switch seats sometime.
Just to mix it up.
Okay. I'd like to have a clerk call the next case.
Case number 2025-04, John and Roberta Shaw, trustees of the Shaw Nominee Trust, care of William D. Crowell Esquire and Michael G. Donovan Esquire. All of the property located at 175 Gorham Road, assessor's map parcel, assessor's map 24 parcel, 0246.
No, next one. R4.
R4, sorry. In RR zoning district, the applicant seeks the special permit or in the alternate of the variance, 325, 54, A1, and A. Alteration or extension of a single or two-family residential, and 325, attachment to table 2, area regulation to construct in addition on their pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw, chapter 3, 325, 52, and 54, and MGL, chapter 40A, section 6 and 10. The Harwich Police Department submitted comments indicating they have no concerns. The Harwich Board of Health submitted comments indicating that Title V inspection conducted by a licensed Title V inspector will be required prior to the building permit sign-off. The Harwich Historic submitted comments indicating the project requires approval from the Historic Commission, and the case will be scheduled to be heard January 15. The Conservation Department submitted comments with the ID 175, Gorham Road was an AE flood zone and will need to file a conservation file with the confirmation. A letter was submitted by Mara Collery of 21 Whining Way, Harwich Court.
So, I'll read that in the record. Dear board member? It's dated, actually, there's no date. Oh, January 3rd. From Mara Collery. I appreciate receiving notification about case number 2025-04 filed by John and Robert Roberta Shaw, trustees of the Shaw Nominee Trust for their property at 175 Gorham Road. I had the opportunity to review their plans online and do not have any concerns about the proposed addition or the variance they have requested. From the plans, it looks like the addition will enhance their living space and add value to their home. I do have concerns about increased traffic on Whining Way as a result of the construction. Although their house is on Gorham Road, in recent years, the homeowners have had times access their property from Whining Way. Parking cars in their yard are butting their roadway. I would object to any access to their property for any vehicles, construction or otherwise, from Whining Way, which is a narrow dead-end road with only six houses. Other neighbors have expressed similar concerns, including Larry Collie of 12 Whining Way, who is copied here. Before the board approves the variance for this project, I would ask for the, for insurance that vehicles, construction or otherwise, will not access this property at 175 Gorham Road from Whining Way. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this matter. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me and her home phone number.
There were no other comments from the other town departments or butters were received.
Let's have the applicant induce themselves and who is representing, assisting you in your presentation.
Hi, it's Michael Donovan and Bill Crowell of Crowell and Donovan Law. And seated behind me is our client, John Shaw, who owns the property with his wife, This is a, a property on Gorham Road, down towards Sacquetucket area. It's a house that was built in the 1800s as a salt box colonial, and then over the years, there were multiple additions, wings that were put on each side facing Gorham Road, and then other additions heading backwards, the back of the property. What was left was this gap where we're trying to, the proposal is to fill in that gap to make it usable space. Kind of in the middle of the house there, you can see proposed one-story addition with the diagonal lines on it. To jump to the end and then work maybe back a little bit, that, that's, there's internal some renovations being done within the building, but that not really a concern here. So that's really the only issue from a zoning standpoint. As you can see, the setback is non-conforming there. It's 8.2 feet currently under the existing. The, the wall is going to stay at the same plane of where the wall is in the front of the house. It's going to carry that back to there, which is more than 8.2 feet. What will happen is because that air is being filled in, that's where the bulkhead is now to access the basement. And so they're moving the bulkhead along that wall. And so the bulkhead itself will only be 6.8 feet from the lot line. So we'll cut it down a little bit, but again, that's at the very end of the bulkheads. We're talking about 18 inches above the ground, down to, down to the ground that's on there. To just go back as to everything else, so the only other changes that are being made are, are conforming to conforming. So the building coverage is in a 15% max zone. It's 7.2, will go to 7.8, well below. And the existing site coverage is a 25% max area, and it's currently 14.28, and it's go to 14.6, so minuscule, you know, change in the site coverage as well. There's several that are non-conforming, but there's no changes to it. So the lot size, the frontage, and the southerly setback are all non-conforming, but they're not changing in any way. And then the others, the front setback, the rear setback, and the building height are conforming, and there's no change going on whatsoever. So it's a very limited addition here of just the first floor in that one area. I would note that we, you mentioned about the historic. We did, in fact, go to historic a couple of weeks ago, and they were very favorable and granted the ability to move forward with the project. And then, while we're at it, the comment of the, the letter, we would submit that anything beyond what's going to happen during this construction is not jurisdiction here or what's in front of the board tonight about who could park a drive on Whining Way. As far as anything to do with the construction, Mr. Shaw has assured me that, that no one's going to be accessing his property for, in any way, for the construction with respect to Whining Way, that they'll use Gorham Road and they'll park in his drive. He has a good-sized driveway, and they'll park in his driveway. So we don't see that being an issue at all. As a lawyer, I get concerned when it says construction vehicles or otherwise, as if like anyone at any time can't drive on that Whining Way. So I would, just to make it easy for the board, we're fine that the construction vehicles are not allowed to drive on Whining Way. So what we're left with is, is just that little portion that's getting filled in, and it's going to stay non-conforming, and it's going to increase the, intensify the non-conformity by like, you know, one and a half feet roughly. And again, I would just point out again, that's the bulkhead only. It's not even a building. It's just lower, as the bulkhead goes down, the last couple of foot and a half are going to pass beyond where the existing building is. Would submit that this is a case that's ripe for a special permit, that in no way would there be any substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood based off of filling in this little bit of area and adding a bulkhead along that side. Even the one letter that we got said that she's in favor of, of the project itself. It was just a question about vehicles on her street. And so that little addition, I think it's nine by, nine by 12, is not going to create any substantial detriment. It won't create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, or noise, or odor, or congestion in any way. It's just filling in that small gap in the house so that they can run off a, a room inside as part of a remodel of the first floor. And that's all I have to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
No questions.
No?
None.
Ken?
No questions.
John?
I'm in favor of this. My only question is that, that exclusive use, isma is yours? My only question is that, that exclusive use easement is yours, right? Off of Whining Way? That's not on the plan? So just in regards to the neighbor's objection, it seems like there's an easement there specifically to allow you to drive onto the lot.
Does it go? The neighbor, yes. The neighbor to the south. Oh, it'll be this one.
Yeah, I understand it not want the traffic, but it seems like they have, they have a right to do it.
They have a right to do it, yeah.
Something to be able to address and any restrictions.
I drafted those easements for Mr. Shaw and they worked it out.
No further questions? Okay, timeframe?
This spring.
This March through two months, starting in March.
And maintain construction vehicles in the lot?
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
You can handle that?
He has, yeah, he has sufficient type of, yep.
I, hey, just one quick question. So I walk in the lot and there was red writing and somebody painted something on the corner of the house on the lawn. It was just, it was in red, I can read this, I couldn't, I didn't, it was not familiar to me as far as notations for construction, but maybe it was just.
Where about?
On the right hand, on the front of the house, right-hand side, walking, you know, towards where you're going, it just, there was just some writing on the.
I had National Grid out.
Okay, so.
Moving the gas.
All right, just, I didn't, didn't recognize the.
Notation.
You know.
Is that a long gas line along the, along the house?
Is there what?
The, the long section of the house on that side? Is that a gas line that's about six inches off the ground?
No, there's no gas.
I wouldn't thought so, but it looked like, it looked like it was going into the meter.
There's no.
I mean, it's existing, so I mean, it not, it has nothing to do with this. I was just curious since I saw it.
I do feel however that we can request and make a condition of construction vehicles not accessing Whining Way.
That's fine.
All right. Limited to construction, right?
Limited to construction.
Yeah, that's the, that's the part I want.
Duration of this project.
That's just.
Just for the duration of this project, yeah.
Yeah, for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public way, a street, a street or road. Access to the site from Whining Way by construction vehicles denied.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I, what I would do with that. I don't believe there's anyone in the public that wants to speak to this. So it, do we have any additional questions for the applicant, by the members?
No.
No questions.
No questions.
All right, the information submitted as part of this application, which we incorporate in this decision include notice of appeal, the application and petition for public hearing, the narrative, summary of reasoning by the attorneys, proposed site plan by T.S. Land Surveying Inc. dated November 22nd, 2024, building plans by Eonak K. Guzman dated November 12th, 2024, with revised date of November 22nd, '24, and the building permit denial letter dated December 2nd, 2024. I believe that covers all the documents?
Yeah, I think the site plan, is it November 25th? Did you say November 25th or 22nd?
All right, November 25th.
Okay.
Excuse me. One second here, hold on a minute. Yeah, there's no revised date. Excuse me. So building plans by Eonak Guzman, oh wait, that's T.S., T.S.
Yeah, no, that's the T.S., yeah. I thought you said.
Okay. It's why I did say the 22nd.
Okay.
It's the 20.
The ones you have in front of you, the 25th, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, excuse me, just double check here.
Committing 11 12 and Division 1, 11 22.
Okay, I had it right.
Yeah.
That was correct, okay. So I was correct on that, thank you. Okay. Finding the facts. The lot is in the R R zone. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming in regard to area requirements with 32,069 square feet and non-conforming frontage of 69.56 feet, but will remain unchanged. Property has non-conforming setbacks on the north and south sides, each of which require a minimum of 20 feet. Southside setback of 18.4 feet will be unchanged. The northside setback of 8.2 feet will be intensified to 6.8 feet with proposed expansion of the great room and the location of the bulkhead. Existing bulkhead, oh, see, the existing building coverage is conforming and will remain unchanged. Site coverage is conforming and will remain so, going from 14.2% to 14.6%.
It's, it's minor, but the building coverage is not unchanged. It's going up to 7.5.
Excuse me.
But still conform.
It's conforming, but going up to, thank you. Missed that, 7.5?
Yep.
I mentioned the site coverage. Building height is conforming and will be unchanged. Proposed addition on the norway side of the dwelling and creation of the additional habitable space will result in only an intensi, an only intensification of the pre-existing non-conforming northside setback will not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. Addition will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any discussion by the board regarding, or the applicant regarding those findings of facts?
No.
Okay. Condition of approval the board will impose instead of here would be for life of the prop, of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not any public street or road. Access to the site from Whining Way by construction vehicles is denied. The special permit issuance of a building permit is subject to the approval of the Conservation Department, Historic Commission, and Board of Health.
For the construction vehicle access, do we have to put in there for the, for the life of this project or is that by definition, life of this project?
I, I said that.
You did?
Yep. Yes. Let me just repeat it.
Yeah.
For the life of the, for the, for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and in not any public way, public street or road. Access to the site from Whining Way by construction vehicles is denied.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, that, I think covers it. Do we agree?
Yep.
Okay. Further discussion on that, I don't believe, so like, I'm, I'll make a motion to accept these documents, finding of facts and conditions of approval as stipulated.
So moved.
Okay, 10 seconds? All right. And a vote on this, gentlemen?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's all approved, five to nothing. And like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, Ken, I have a second.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's five to nothing. And voting tonight would be Al, myself, Chris Murphy, John August, and Ken Dixon. And the chair now entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
I have a second, folks?
Second.
Okay, second by Chris. Vote a motion to close.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't believe there's any further discussion, but is there, gentlemen?
No.
Okay, all right. Chair asks for motion of the clerk, regarding this case.
Your partner just pulled an Irish goodbye, was that? Couldn't believe.
No, he's all under the weather.
Case number 2025-04, John and Roberta Shaw, trustees for the Shaw Nominee Trust, heard with William Crowell and Michael Donovan Esquires. Property owner, owner of the property is located 175 Gorham Road, Assessors Map, 24 parcel, R4 and R R zoning district applicant has been granted a special permit from 325-54A and 1A. Alteration or extension of single family, two, uh, single or two-family residential structure and 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulation to construct and addition on their pre-existing non-conforming single family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 325-52 and 54 and Mass. General Law 48, Section 6 and 10. Granting is consistent with the Dale and Dietrich and related cases as there will be no intensification on one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. On a pre-existing non-conforming lot, as proposed, the structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respects to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted here on tow is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. For the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any street or public way. Access to the site from Whining Way by construction vehicle is denied. A special permit with the issuance of a building permit are subject to the approval of the Conservation Department, Historic Commission, and Board of Health. Violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7 of the Howard zoning bylaw as they may be amended from time to time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Question by John. Thank you. Any further discussion by the board?
Only one. Do we need a construction timeline between, restrict between Memorial Day and Labor Day? I don't know if that's an issue.
Everything that's on the property is a minor project, so.
I don't think so. I don't, I don't, I'm okay with it because it's, it's a minor scenario back there, they're going to keep the construction vehicles on there, on materials.
It's not a congested area.
Yeah.
Like Gorham Road.
I'm not opposed, I, I just want to make sure it's not an oversight. I'm not opposed.
Okay, good, okay. I just wanted to thank you for bringing that, because I did not bring that up. Appreciate that. Was that, and that, okay.
Vote.
Any further discussion? Good comment by Ken, thank you. Vote of the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, five to nothing. You have it.
Thank you.
Dr. Crowell, last, the next case here, this, we just approved one of these about a year or two ago on an extension on this house, is that right? You involved in that?
One minute.
The house had an extension a year or two ago. I pulled up the house and looked familiar.
I, I'm just kidding, the, in 2000.
Pinewood Lane.
20.
Yeah.
I got a special permit for the house.
On an, an addition on the.
The main house.
Yeah, the left side, yeah. North side, I guess it is, yeah.
Correct.
Get you a second there, hold on a second. Looks like they're currently doing a front sidewalk.
All right, yes, you read the next case, please.
Case number 25-05, Richard Kasek. Attorney's Williams and Michael G. Donovan own the property located on 19 Pinewood Lane, Assessors Map, 4 parcel, T1-29 in the Howard, in the R81 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative variance from 325-14, T3 and K. Supplemental regulations, 325-54A, non-conforming structures, and 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulation for interior renovations to convert a pre-existing non-conforming accessory residence, residential structure, EU pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 325-52 and 54 and that's General Law 48, Section 6 and 10. The Howard Police Department submitted comments indicating no concern. Howard Board of Health submitted comments indicating floor plan of the existing family dwelling will be required, that if the kitchen is being proposed, a two-compartment septic tank will be required. No other comments from the town government departments or rebuttals were received.
Let's tell the applicant representatives and do some cells and anyone assisting you.
Thank you, Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Court with my partner, Michael Donovan. I've had that cold that everybody's had for two and a half weeks now.
Everybody's got it. They say everybody has got it.
Everybody's got it, right.
So, you know, it's.
It will.
So I'm hoping my voice will hold out. Unfortunately, Mr. Kasek could not attend this evening. He wanted to, but he had to be at a funeral today. And the builder, Chris Giles from Patriot Builders, is not feeling well either, so then there were, then there were none. So we submitted the Assessors map to show you where Pinewood Lane is, south of Lower County. And let me just jump ahead to the end, real quick, quickly. We're not doing anything to the main house. We're not changing the footprint of the, what's shown as the existing garage to be converted to an ADU. None of the coverages are changing, none of the setbacks are changing. I think this was something mentioned, this situation is something that was mentioned to me by the chair a year or two ago, that this was why you folks had a change to the ADU bylaw, so that there would be more housing available, that you could take a pre-existing non-conforming structure and convert it to an ADU with a special permit from this board. If we met the sides and rear setbacks for that existing garage, we wouldn't have to be here. It would be administratively approved by the building commissioner. No board approval required under the, under the bylaw. But then the new amendment to the bylaw said that this board by special permit could grant the ADU even though we don't meet current setback.
Correct.
So I think this is a primetime case that you were talking about for relief from this board. board, so that the special permit request is based upon that change in the bylaw and that the new ADU would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood and would not increase substantially noise, fumes, odors, congestion, traffic, or the like. It would not be a nuisance. Rachel, as usual, has a very comprehensive summary for you folks, but boils down to the applicant are proposing to convert the detached garage into an ADU. Once again, could not, she could not find a Board of Appeals decision for the garage, but building permits were issued, et cetera. So how it ended up less than 20 feet from the setbacks, we don't know, but it did.
My conjecture on that is the, the building permit at the time, it was probably several versions, and this was the one for deck sheds. Small additions.
Express-type permit.
Yep. It has across the top.
So, under 325-14 supplemental regulations, the bylaw says the zoning Board of Appeals may grant a spe... Excuse me. Grant a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming principal dwellings and residential accessory buildings, which is what this is, that do not comply with the setback or lot coverage requirements in the applicable zoning district, which opens up a structure like this to be able to have an ADU to create more housing. So here we are. I can walk you through, if you would like, how we meet all the other criteria of the ADU, but basically, we're under 1,000 square feet. We're only going to have one bedroom. Yes, we're going to have a kitchen and a bathroom and a living room, and we're going to have a separate entrance, and we're going to look like aesthetically the main house. And we have a parking area and our own separate entrance, if I did mention that, but we meet all of those nuts and bolts criteria under the ADU bylaw. So we'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Trying to keep it short, not just for my voice, but because you folks have had a long night also.
Thank you.
Well...
Give me that consideration.
You will.
We don't want a short change in your opportunities for approval, so, you know, any details you want to present to us is fine.
That was it.
Okay. Any... I'd like to ask the board members for their comments or opinions.
Al, I'm going to just go and agree with Attorney Crowe. This is exactly why we changed our zoning rules to propose to have more housing available, more affordable housing, more attainable housing, and I think this absolutely meets the criteria.
Well said. John?
I would agree. My only comment, but it doesn't, it wouldn't affect your site coverage, is I think if you do rent it to a third party, they're probably going to need to reconfigure their parking a little bit. But there's ample room for site coverage to do that.
Yeah, I think right now that's not their intention.
If it's a family member, they can keep telling people to move their cars. It doesn't work, but if it's somebody else...
Yeah.
What Ken said, it's exactly the reason we have the new change to the regulations. Then I won't repeat everybody else, so...
Okay. I do have a couple of questions. Yeah, obviously, as Ken mentioned, key thing is it, it meets the criteria for the ADU bylaw and further projects does not have any, does not change, there's any setbacks, building or site coverages, and the height of the structure remain unchanged. What's the status of that trailer? The yellow trailer?
Doesn't show in the plan, does it? I think so. We don't, we don't have a trailer on the plan.
Yeah, it's on the site.
Yeah, good question. There was workers there yesterday doing a, redoing their front walk. Maybe it's related to storage of those ones.
I haven't seen it. Does it look like an RV?
No, it's not. It's a 20-foot storage trailer.
It's a 20-foot storage trailer.
Don't wait, don't get too close. That's fine. It's just a trailer.
Go with the trailer.
Judge the trailer.
Storage trailer.
I mean, is this permanent or is this going to be removed?
Mr. Chairman, you can see that they're not in a position to address that. They don't know that the trailer there.
It's news to us.
It's mobile.
It's a storage trailer.
It's, yeah, but is it, is it, is it a permanent storage trailer?
No. Well, I, I, I wouldn't commit to that. And not committing to it, it's movable, and I believe it's allowed since it's a movable trailer. You can have one on your lot as long as nobody's living in it.
A lot of, a lot of people, including myself, gets a trailer like that from like October to April to store your outdoor furniture, and then they come and remove it.
Okay. Just want to...
I'm going with the construction guys. I think that would be, they brought that.
There was, there was at least three trucks there when I drove by to look at it.
Okay. Just want to, just kind of check.
That's not the shed. There is a shed listed behind the property.
Yes.
That's not...
A little right in the corner behind that. Again, that's not it.
Correct.
Just, all right. Information submitted with this application to incorporate in the decision is follows. No appeal to the application and petition of a public hearing. The narrative and summary of reasoning. Followed site plan by Moore Engineering dated December 9th, 2024. Existing building plans by Thomas A. Moore Design Company dated June 26, 2017.
There are building plans by Patriot Builders also.
Okay, hold on a second here. Apparently, I somehow, and I did this, left out a sheet. One second. It's on this one. Thank you. Let me just grab this. Proposed building plans by Patriot Builders dated December 9th, 2024. Building permit denial letter dated November 8th, 2024. I think it covers the documents, folks. Findings and facts. Lot is in the RM zone. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming in regards to area requirements with 11,216 square feet and conforming frontage of 161.12 feet. Existing garage permitted in 1993 was approved with non-conforming setbacks on the east and south side of the structure and will remain unchanged. Existing garage is a detached accessory structure with unfinished space on the first floor and finished space on the second floor. Because of the proposal includes converting the space into an ADU, it is adding habitable space in the setback by converting the first-floor garage into a living room and kitchen. The second floor is already finished space, and the added dormer will not be created within the setback. The existing building and site coverage are conforming and will remain unchanged. Building height is conforming and will be unchanged. Proposed ADU is under 1,000 square feet, with at least one off-street parking space, will not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood and will not create additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, congestion. I didn't ask about timing and so forth, so it, before we get into proposal on, on conditions of approval, do we need to, in this location, use the date frame? Because I don't, we're just doing everything inside, correct?
Right. Right.
Yeah. We don't, we don't need that.
So we don't need the...
There's nobody but residents going down that dirt road.
Slowly.
We do want to make sure the vehicles are on the property, though. Well, is Pinewood a private street? I think I saw a sign that said private drive.
I think it is.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
If it's dirt, it is.
Dirt. You know, I ran into a public road in Wellfleet that's dirt.
We can, I think we can fit the, any vehicles on the site. When you were doing your site visit the other day, were there vehicles on the, on the property?
When I was there, there was none. Okay, so we don't need the date requirement.
Thank you.
I don't, okay. You all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay. And about all construction vehicles being parked in the opposite property on any public street or road. If it's a private way, we actually don't have control.
Correct. That's why I asked that question.
Well, it says public, so...
Right. You said public, so if it's not public, then we can park on the road.
Yeah, but might as well, might as well get rid of that condition. We all would agree to that.
I think that's fine.
Yes.
Okay, so we need that condition. The special permit issuance of building permit are subject to the approval of the Board of Health and the typical violation of the special permit on the MGLs. Okay, those are, be the conditions, and we just mentioned findings and facts and documentation. So it, I'd like to have, so there's no further discussion. I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, accept the documents, findings, and facts, and conditions as we stipulated.
Second.
Okay. Approved by Ken. Vote, gentlemen?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing. Okay. I'd like to ask a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Chris.
Motion by Chris? Okay. And second by who? Is it Al? Sure, okay. Flow to the closing?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, voting in the case. Al Doney, Brian Sullivan, Chris Murphy, John August, and Ken Dixon. And Chair now entertain motion to close discussion.
So moved. Second.
Does that mean, sorry, does that mean the Chair is not voting on this?
I said Brian Sullivan.
Okay, thank, sorry.
Well, we can, we can go four to nothing here if you'd like to give it a shot. I mean, I, you know, it's...
I'll reserve that for another night. Thank you.
Any further discussion, gentlemen?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so I will now, it's back to Al, ask for a, a motion on the case.
Case number 2025-05. Richard Kasek. Through the attorney William Crowe and Michael Donovan. Owner of the property located 19 Pinewood Lane. Assessors map, four parcel, T1-29 in the RH zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit in, from 325-14, T3, and K. Supplemental regulations, 325-54A, non-conforming structures, and 325 attachment to area, table two area regulation for interior renovation to convert the pre-existing non-conforming accessory residential structure into an ADU and adding additional habitable space within the setbacks pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 325-52 and 54, Mass General Law chapter 40A section six. Granting is consistent with the Howard's ADU bylaw as the gross floor area is less than 1,000 feet and there is at least one off-street parking. Further, there will be no new non-conforming, no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood in their pre-existing non-conforming lot, and as a proposed ADU, the renovation will not create additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, or congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereon to is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. The special permit and the issuance of the building permit are subject to the approval of the Health, Board of Health. A violation of the terms of these conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to chapter, uh, general law chapter 40A section seven and the Howard zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time.
Okay. I have a second, please.
Second.
Question by Ken. Any further discussion?
No.
I'd like to have a vote in the motion, folks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you very much.
Five to nothing.
Thank you. Have a good rest of, what's left of the evening.
Hey, wait, you're not done yet.
Not done yet.
You got to pull that last case officially.
Oh, good point. We're just seeing if you were paying attention.
If you want to earn your keep here tonight, I mean, you got to do, you know. Okay, Al, Al, you can actually, I don't, I didn't do any of this thing, so you can read the final case from...
All right, case number 2025-0633 Dune Road LLC. Owners of the, Richard and Ellen Fox. Here of Taylor, Aug., 28, Nicoletta Way, Ashby. The property is located at 33 Dune Road. Assessors map, five, five parcel, W1-5 in the RH zoning district. The applicant seeking a special permit or an alternative for Bavarians of 325-54. Alterations and extensions of the structures of 325 attachment to table two area regulation construct a pool pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 325-52, 54, and Mass General Law 40A section six and 10.
Okay, the, the applicant has requested, actually, attorneys are here, but the applicant has requested a withdrawal, not a continuance, but a withdrawal of this case, which, so it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I got to make a motion at some point here, but, you know, so, actually, all in favor. So I'd like to make a motion that we, we accept the withdrawal. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
I just, I just want to make clear on the record, it's being withdrawn, it's already been resubmitted.
I, I know that.
The hearing.
It's small.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're talking, you know, but it has been resubmitted and...
It actually was...
We'll be back.
The previous agent that requested the resub, so actually, you guys didn't even need to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been, it's been...
I just want to make sure it's not, you know, there's no prejudice here. It's not like it's withdrawn and dropped or anything.
No, it's, it's a withdrawal, but you've actually, actually, no, it is dropped. You've now filed a new case.
Right.
So this case is gone.
Correct, but it's not precluding us from filing the case that we filed.
No, but it's going to have a new case number.
Correct. Yep.
Never had a hearing.
So it'll be, this, this case number is now withdrawn.
Yep.
And you're filing, which is for the February, actually, it's case number seven, I believe, for February, is, no, no, it's case number six. What number is it?
That is six.
I don't know what the new case number is off the top of my head.
Okay. Anyways, it's going to be a brand-new case number for February.
Yep.
Read.
Okay, so, I thought it is, and there's not a matter of prejudice and so forth. You file a whole new case.
Yep.
You file them, did you vote in the motion yet?
Yes, we have all motioned to accept the withdrawal.
Who seconded?
I did.
Al seconded. Good recovery, Al. Thank you. So my, my motion. Okay.
Free to go?
Yes.
Smith?
Feel better.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Turn the corner, maybe end the last week, so it's every day getting a little bit better. Don't get it.
It's nasty. A lot of people have that, yeah.
Geez. My wife currently has that.
There's nothing you can take for it. Besides mucinex.
Yes. Okay. I'm just going to request, so just a minor little, little break. Okay, I'm just gonna request, just a minor, little, little break. We're back. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
And you probably noticed that Tim Bailey was both participating and absent.
No, I did not.
He can't be both. Was he there?
No, he wasn't.
Okay.
Well, it was a different Tim Bailey because it spelt wrong.
Maybe spelled wrong too, okay.
Oh, yeah, I, I missed that one. Okay, at least we all...
But there were five of us, though.
Yes.
Who's missing?
Oh, Chris was there.
I was participating virtually, which is on the next line.
Oh, okay, all right.
Oh, I didn't know you were virtually on that ME as well, Rachel. You, you...
No, no.
No, he was here.
No, she was here.
Look for the comma, it's virtually, comma.
Oh, I was participating, oh, virtually, okay, thank you. All right, so, the minutes, besides the correction of Tim Bailey being in two dimensions at once, any other corrections?
No.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept with the correction on members participating, that we accept the, the minutes.
Second.
So moved.
And John seconded it? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention, I was not here, I couldn't contest to the minutes.
Oh, okay, so it's, okay, so Ken is abstaining. That's four, nothing, good catch, thank you. All right, discussion, new business. And I have one more additional new business item besides A, B, and C. Discussion regarding my memo to the Select Board. Did, did you all have a chance to read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you get a response, Brian?
Yep, and the, I had, Select Board brought it up the other night. I had more than one member of the Select Board contact me to discuss it. And I had a meeting yesterday with the Julie, Julie and, and Joe Powers. Bottom line is that if a meeting needs to be held in our location, such as the, you know, for a meeting where we know the attendance is gonna be beyond the capacity of this room, and we're pretty much talking about this time, this is because of the potential 40Bs coming up, and given the amount of, the amount of interest in the community, you know, the board here felt the fact that this was not gonna be enough room to hold that hearing in general. And the result is that they, the Select Board agrees and the town will make sure that there's a room available that can do the recording and interactive, so we can, the members can call in and be virtual if need be for a meeting.
Excellent.
Okay, so...
Are they gonna have to buy new equipment for that, then, they're gonna do all that?
You know, Joe Powers felt that that good portion of the equipment was available. Okay? And that board members, it was not, it was not voted on during the meeting, but discussions that board members had, and I think they instructed Joe to, after I met with him for the next meeting, get back to him on the meeting and what the results are. But the bottom line is that the town feels that, particularly a 40B, that the importance of that project, that proposal and hearing, we need to provide ample space, you know, for residents to attend the meeting in a comfortable fashion and so everyone can be there to hear and express their, hear, to hear opinions, presentations, and express their, their concerns or thoughts or approvals, et cetera. So it will be a room selected that will meet the projected needs of state attendance. Okay. But on a note, when I was going through all this, I actually went down and I measured the multipurpose room at the community center. I know you've all have been there before, right? You know, it's only a third big in this room?
I'm just counting the chairs here, we've got seven across.
A third, a third in length and width or area?
Area, not including the stage. It's only about, it's the, it's, that room as far as the general area is around sixteen, little over sixteen hundred square feet, and this is a little over eleven hundred square feet.
Because I think the seating capacity is a hundred and sixty-two.
Actually, that's up for debate.
Because the fire department was there when I was there for the meeting, and they kicked people out because we were over one sixty-two.
What meaning was that?
It was a...
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, I know it's one. So that, the, the fire department, I gotta write this down, they have that at one sixty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Prior to that, it was not at one forty, I was told. But the question at hand is, again, this is my measurements, so this is not a scientific thing here, but I had a tape measure out, I know how to read a tape measure, and basically, this room was rated for one forty-five. Okay, all right. Now, of course, that doesn't include the fact that it's all these desks are here. Now, at the moment, given the chairs and the area, including these desks here, this room can hold about, from my calculations, from my assessment, seventy-seven people, including the board. There's fifty-nine chairs right now, or was the other day, in this room. And basically, we can, you know, squeeze in a few, few, few more, and you could probably hold up to seventy-seven. The much larger, and so that comes down to, at one forty-five that it's currently rated at, whoever did it, comes down to approximately eight point two feet, square feet per person. Okay? At one forty, that comes, for the, for that room, that comes down to, came down to a ten point something feet per square, you know, per person.
Okay, Brian?
But anyways, give me those...
Given the time.
All right, but given those calculations, that room down the, in the, Joe Powers is checking it out. He feels the fact that it was originally done based upon table seating and for cafeteria style and not for auditorium style. And he's checking into it because in general, we feel the fact that it might be able to fit auditorium style about a hundred and ninety people. So the factor of the one seven sixty-two might be based upon...
I'd be shocked if that many people showed.
Oh, I, me too, but that's besides, but that's...
I think this room is probably big enough, but...
Well, Chris, I'm more concerned about us being able to virtually attend, because if we can't, if we have board members can't attend, it doesn't matter how many people show up.
Yeah, no, the bottom line is, the board feels, Select Board also agrees, that they don't feel, because the board itself, from, there's a whole bunch of members that are gonna be here from any 40B applicant, plus their own board members and, and presenters. And it's, it's gonna, you know, they're, they're gonna be half several people. But the bottom line is, the Select Board has agreed, Joe Powers said that they will look into it, but they anticipate, you know, provide a room that will fit in a, in more, a larger crowd that can be fitting here. They want to get into the, well into the hundred range, which this room cannot do.
The chairman, we closed the meeting right now, we can still, we could still talk off the record, but she's exhausted.
Yeah, we're gonna go over here, just real quick, conference interest, compliances, guys, just gonna take care of that?
Done.
Done. Brought my certificate if you need proof.
All right, and...
I want to email it to the clerk's office.
They claim, they claim that it's electronic.
Oh, okay.
I didn't even sign.
You do not need to print this, we get a record of it.
Okay.
I have to go get my dog.
I didn't print it.
Tomorrow, so.
Volunteer fair, we had two people here tonight, they came in, they, you know, they said they come in for a short while to see what was happening. Where Chris and I did the volunteer fair, and we had a handful of people that were interested, you know, two of which came to tonight's meeting to see what was going on. Okay, so it was good. And final thing, and I just, just take a few more minutes here, what you guys' opinion is. In February, we already have, we have seven cases. More than likely, we're not gonna be able to get them all in, in February. So the question comes up is, do we want to consider having an additional, an extra meeting
No.
in February or early March?
So squeeze them in, why can't we get them in, I guess?
Just, just roll that out, okay?
We gotta be maybe more concise and, seven cases, we should be able to get through that in three hours.
That's fine, if we, you know, everybody in agreement on that? Okay.
I have, I mean, I have conflicts before and after, so...
Yeah.
I'm, it's, I planned around the meeting on the twenty-sixth.
I delayed my vacation by one day to be here on the twenty-sixth, I'm leaving on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, any additional old business?
Nope.
Okay. And, and what is the correspondence? Well, that, I'd just like to say it's nine thirty-four.
One thing we did do on the previous meetings in the past is inform the people early that if we don't get done by nine thirty, you'll set a time.
Ten o'clock, we would do that.
It was a three-hour meeting, so seven to ten, now it's six thirty to ten.
I think you gotta do it like the town meeting does it, that we're not gonna start any new ones after
Right.
the set time.
So right at the beginning of the meeting, maybe make that announcement and give people the option.
I do think that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that night in February going to ten o'clock as far as not starting a case before, you know, after ten.
No, not start a case after nine thirty.
Well, that, I'm saying ten, it's up to the board, what do you want to do?
Previous, previous board, we met at seven o'clock, and for the same 40Bs, Mr. Raya made a motion to everybody in the room that this meeting was over at ten PM.
Sure.
He held it right to that.
What if you're in the middle of a case?
That was for the 40Bs, you said.
The 40Bs.
We're just talking about...
He did a similar, he did a similar thing for the regular meeting, that he would announce at the beginning, we're gonna be done by ten.
Well, no, he, he, I thought it was, he wouldn't start a case after ten o'clock.
I don't believe so, you can check with him.
Well, if that was the case, now that we've changed it a half hour earlier...
Doesn't matter, I mean, it's what this board wants.
After nine thirty.
I think we wouldn't start one after nine thirty.
I would agree with that, we don't start another one after nine thirty.
But if we're in the middle of one and it goes later...
You gotta finish it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so...
It's three hours.
Well, for the next meeting, tell people that we're not starting a new case after nine thirty. Make that motion, do we have a second on that?
Yep, here, second.
Okay.
But I think the onus really is on us, Brian, we're the ones that have to move it along.
I, I, I realize that. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, not a problem, we'll make sure they know that's nine thirty. So it is now nine thirty-six, like to make a motion to be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm assuming it's five, nothing, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Just gonna tell you guys, remember the case that...